And you're all set. Have a good meeting.
All right, great.
Thanks, Steph.
It is six o'clock, December 5th, 2023. And it's the media and select board. So, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written? Number five, Ms. Campfield.
Seven.
Second, uh, five minutes. Tom Lee, all of us in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Start with this third statement here. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings, and we ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community members. And we want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our communities. And for that, I don't see any why. So, no, move TV report of the town.
Evening. Happy December. I'm gonna start out with a reminder about winter weather. In which fairness, we are expecting snow tonight, as well as some of the coldest weather so far this season. So please go to the town website, citronhobby.gov, visit the readiness and prepare this button. Click on that. There's all kinds of tips for getting weather, getting ready for the cold weather, getting ready for storms. Four ones is four hours. So please go and prepare as the winter is upon us. Uh, speaking of winter, Willow's Golf Course is tentatively scheduled to close on December 10th. Weather dependent, you could possibly go to December 17th. Dog walk will begin starting on the 7/24th. We're once again looking forward to sharing the beautiful course with the local residents of Citrus for walking, sledding, and other winter activities. We ask that you please have your dogs unleashed at all times. Avoid walking over the greens or sand traps, or most importantly, pick up after your dog. Have a great winter. We hope your dogs enjoy it, and we'll see you at the golf course in the spring. The Drifting Avenue remains open for lunch and dinner Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. We serve breakfast on Saturday and Sunday. Beginning of 7/24th, the Drifting Avenue will be open Wednesday through Sunday. We'll serve soups and breakfast on the weekends in addition to lunch and dinner menus. Ours will be 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Winter recreation registration, or the recreation department opens tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Log onto the town website for more information regarding winter programming and registration. Also, Carlson and North Pole Information Chief are due back to the recreation department by noon tomorrow afternoon. Don't miss out on this special opportunity. Your kids can receive a special phone call from Santa Claus. Information sheets can be found in the recreation department or on the town website. Santa will be calling lucky children on Monday, December 11th, between 6:00 p.m. and 6:45 p.m. Please make sure you get those phones in by noon time tomorrow. Also reminded that the test nets have been taken down and put in storage. Will be reinstalled for use in early months depending on what weather. Be down Cold Parkway this Friday. The engineering firm working on the Cold Parkway Resiliency Project will be doing an existing conditions drone survey of Cold Parkway Harbor. Data gathered from this drone will be used to generate a three week, three D model of the existing conditions in the harbor. Andrew and John Collins will be on site around midday for a couple of hours to complete the survey. Drone will be flown by a licensed pilot that will comply with FAA drone regulations. Uh, lighthouse update. Existing granite tower section, the grouting is complete on the existing granite portion amongst the bottom part of the tower. The injection grouting of existing brick tower section has suffered delay due to coordination issues with the masons. We expect this work to begin as always this afternoon, but right now they are delayed. We don't know why. Hopefully get an update for that tomorrow. So the first part of the grouting, where the granite is, is done. Now we'll do the next four feet of the old brick, and we'll grout in between the new brick and the rubble in there. So that's delayed right now. I'll have better answers tomorrow where we are on that. Uh, the injection grouting on the new tower will take place when the old tower is complete. Staging is expected to be moved once the grouting is complete. So I have a date for that. Landroom cockpit is nearly complete. Last panels were installed today. There's one remaining open left to complete, which would be an access panel. Get it out of the balcony. Landroom material flooring and framing began work today. We expect that to be good by the end of the week. The balcony railings, the poles will be set by early next week, and then the railings will be field measured. We expect the others to be installed next week. The issue with the railings is it's not a perfect octagon. So we have to actually well set the poles and measure and custom make the new railings. Those will probably be next week. Contacted contractor continues to work on Chief Justice Christian Highway. We're almost up to where we'll be going to the site for the new water treatment plant that is expected to be buttoned up by the holiday season. Finally, the Citrus Food Pantry. Contingency increase in clients seeking assistance. They have a new list of most needed items that they're unable to get from the Grand Boston Food Bank. White tuna, beef soups, jell-O and pudding, regular ground coffee, mixed vegetables, cam and sloppy joe, and green and purple teas. These will be dropped off the pantry during operating hours under the bench behind the old gate school. Citrus Library, Village Market, and Shaw's also collect. That's what I had for today.
Thank you. Questions? Or, Mr.?
Uh, two, two questions. One relates to 3A. Um, I was on it just like five minutes ago, and it seems to be in better shape than it has been for a few months. Um, my question is, will it be even more improved before it's buttoned up? Or is what we're getting is what we've got now?
Most of it is what you've got to get now. The portion up by the church will make some better repairs on that. Uh, that's gonna sit for the winter, but mostly what you see is what we can get.
Okay, well then it strikes me that question signs won't be just taped up.
Yeah, especially up by, uh, the church.
Yeah, it's, it's better. It is better. There's no question.
I feel they're working now. They made the repairs down below. Won't be making any more repairs.
Yeah.
Past, um, the reservoir bridge, going towards the old pocket nest. That's buttoned up for us.
I mean, I avoid it when I can, but sometimes.
Part of the issue, I'd say, part of the issue is the road is in such bad shape.
Right.
So it was just awful for the road.
Right.
So there are actually portions of the road that is part of this project in the spring. We'll have to actually repave the entire lane. Not just the ditch. That was partly greater than last time, and they want us to actually repave the whole thing. Because it's what they make utilities do all the time. We're not a utility, we're a local water park. Uh, so we did agree that in the areas where the road is really bad, we'll make repairs there, but mostly what you see.
Well, keep speeds down. Um, the other question I have is related to the golf course, and we'll just call it what it is, the Dog Walkers. Um, last year we had two, I believe two, maybe three trash barrels on the course. And I would like to suggest that we not be as retumine as we've been about beaches and taking the barrels on the golf course.
They went, they went on the golf course of the pocket lot? But yeah, it's like, yeah, make sure we put those back up.
Well, and if, I think last year there, there was one further into the course. So I know there was one in the, I mean, um.
I still remember. Possibly, I don't remember. Yeah.
Well, it's, when you ask people to be careful about the course, it's nice to give them a way to be careful. So I would just ask, I need to have Dog Walkers. That's all.
Sarah? You're all set.
Just quick questions for you all. Um, will you please refer to maybe, uh, the schedule for the reemeration program? Is that starting in the spring? I couldn't remember.
For mine?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think we've put the bid out yet.
Oh, okay. I thought we projected start.
So if we haven't done the bid yet, it'd be after, it'd be what, probably in January, or February, March. I'll, I'll check the cameras. Okay.
That's what I remember. Our bid.
I'll give you a quarter now.
All right. Um, moving on to the first scheduled item. As of donations.
People are now.
All right.
We love donations.
Yes. So I'm here. Um, we just wrapped up, um, all of our donations from Memorial benches. And, you know, we've had a huge program. Um, but we have a few that have come through that we've worked with over the past year from last fall. So two, seven benches in all, that we need to accept tonight. Two at Willow's Lock. We have two, um, dead or replacements outside the town pier of Park. Little Pocket Park, and those were really in disrepair. We have someone want to replace those, so that's perfect. And two in Special Olympic Park, same situation. You know, very old. Um, they weren't the benches that were standard. They're this kind of store bought. Um, so we replaced two of those. And then the seventh one is a new spot, which is the library. And the Library Foundation identified 10, uh, potential areas for benches. And one, I helped to get installed right up at the front. Um, so as you said, find to plug, that's really a good opportunity if anyone is interested in, um, participating in the program. That's really the only opportunity that we have right now. Um, which would be another one in the front of the library, and then in the rear by the new little old garden, I believe it's called. So some beautiful spots. So we're here just to get your blessing to accept these donations.
Wonderful. Well, we have to thank the McDonough family, the Robinson, the Doobin, uh, the Torren, and the Carolyn family, all those folks. It's absolutely wonderful. They're very generous.
Uh, just two quick things, just so the folks know. We have had requests for benches along the waterfront. And as a policy, just so we did have, well, we're not installed there. A, there's not that implication that they're possible, and B, they're not being improved because of the uh, damage that those sustained. So, uh, that did come up fairly recently. Somebody wanted, they wanted to come see what was tonight. So I just want folks to know that this is not in conflict with that particular policy. The other thing I wanted to know, which I don't, I was not aware of until this morning, but that door should be fully aware is that, um, Michelle was celebrating her 10th anniversary as the town employee.
No.
So, yeah. I think.
We didn't wait.
That was all that.
Anyone else?
Oh, this is great. Well, yeah, I have the wrong benches, the benches down at the town pier were in terribly sad shape. Uh, do we have any idea, or in CBW, you've got any idea as to how many other benches there are where we would be allowed, not on waterfront, because we do have a long waterfront. And I guess with those sort of such great proposals, sort of placing. But if there are any other locations where benches are just in, you know, not good shapes, we have a list of opportunities for people outside the library that I think we take it, maybe somewhere in turn to run around town and look for.
We've already done that.
Yeah. So, so, so we don't.
We have an inventory at all the benches in town. We have no space, not many benches.
Um, but do we have any, Derewlin, let's call them Derewlin benches?
We do not.
Okay.
That we are aware of. Everything's been replaced.
The pier benches were pretty off the shape that were.
The pier benches are, are managed by the harbor master's office. You can certainly check with the harbor master's office to see if there's any opportunity there. And then we'll have to publicize this to everybody. And because so many people have asked for benches on the waterfront.
Well, I'm specifically saying not on the waterfront. That's what I'm saying.
Well, the pier is the waterfront.
Well, technically speaking, I think waterfront would be, I don't want to get to it too over it, but the benches that were on the town pier were, I would call them derewlin. And so we did, um, replace them. And I'm just asking the question, are there any other spots in town? It sounds like we've done it, so I don't really ask.
Yeah, I think the only other ones that are really bad aren't our town property. They're no more phoned, and my understanding is they're addressing that. Um, which is great.
Well, and I mean, clearly there are places where we're doing work, for example, Cold Parkway. There's sounds like we're doing anything down there until we know it's covered up.
We've put in all brand new benches there.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
I, I, it's a good one. We make sure folks, A, let us know, and yeah, make sure that we have all, all these are in good shape.
What are our problems?
Yes.
Um, that's the board knows. Lauren and I are going, have been working on the policies that they've been revising, uh, which, you know, we aren't doing budget stuff. We're gonna start taking bite to that. One of those is to go back to the hard work that Lauren already did on Memorial that we all have a very divine share of in Memorial policy. And that's part of that acquisition. So when we get to that, we'll go back to that. Probably do it on the last.
So someone can talk about, if they want to build a little steel wall, I don't know where else to build a wall, and then
We gotta be serious.
If anyone would really like to do it, a few million, we might.
There's that activity event.
Yeah, the whole. We make an exception.
And if they want to drop a couple of items on that.
Do I have a motion? That is very generous.
Move to accept the, uh, the donations of the benches and various properties of town. Report appreciation is.
Moved by, it's Thomas, and by Ms. Campfield, all of us in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, uh, general obligation. Want to hear bonds?
Good evening.
How are you?
Well, and you?
I'm just, while I'm usually, I'm just looking up current rates to tell you. I wonder how much good news is here.
Yeah, it's great news.
I have so.
I actually got a personal, I actually got a personal phone call from the president of Rock and Roll Bank saying how great the rate was. Um, I want to put a little better, you know, because, uh, you know, it realized. So on November 14th, Town Citrus received 14 competitive bids from bond and note underwriters for the bond total of $7,805,000. One year general obligation bond issued for the following authorized purposes. The Jenkins School roof, additional funds for the Cold Parkway Marine Hook, um, and the INI for the Oceanside, and water main replacements. Uh, as I said, they received 14 bids, which has never happened in 12 years, that I overturned. The winning bid was submitted by Huntington Securities Inc. at a true interest cost of 3.51%. The original bond premium was the $7,806,800 was reduced by the premium that we received and by $351,800. And also, uh, there's money that to pay the issuance costs. Um, Jim, Nancy, and myself, and the town financial advisors from Hilltop Securities, at Conference Call, a standard of wars, uh, they reaffirmed the town's AA plus rating, um, citing the town's very strong economy, stable operating environment, leading to positive finances and growing reserves, and strong management with good financial policies and practices as positive credit factors. I attached the S and P rating to your information, so you could take a look at it. And it's lots of paperwork for you, son. Want any questions?
I do. I'll open it up first, and then I'll. Any questions?
Yeah, no.
Yes. No, it's just. Thank you. Of, of taxpayers for the fiscal stewardship, and we, the whole team have done. Uh, it's just, these are very difficult times to get. We stink none and we nailed it. You're gonna say the taxpayers tend to thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's just fabulous. I just gotta say, it's really, it's really.
We have a good team.
That's a really good team. It's just, it needs to be, it's a. Sarah, yes, Sarah?
Oh, I was just curious, because I did read the report. Uh, I'm just curious when they say the, you know, the, um, higher rated peers, like, what town has done it? That it, are there, is there a triple A on it?
There is a triple A.
Who is?
And we tried for that.
Well, well, Bexbury, Mary.
Oh, Baxbury.
Maricots.
Maricots not. I think it's.
Okay. Okay. And the difference is the reserves and the pension obligations, which I'm in my head.
We can't really fight that.
We can't. No, I was just, I'm just more curious about that.
Yeah, and I, and I, I, of course, now I'm bored. So I, you know, tried to come back to them with some positive, but, um, unfortunately, it was a Eric, uh, issued, uh, letter in 2020. Um, and I wasn't on board then, because I would have come back at him.
Yeah.
Um, I think from time to time, a board's doing great things, but, you know, we have a wrong way to go. As some of the, like, some, like, Jim and Nancy came back, came back at our financial advisors and said, well, no, I'm in Baxbury, from county retirement. And the same situation with Citrus, as, you know, making up downwind liability. But we didn't see it really. I just want that. Nancy, Jim, do you want to say anything to it?
No, I thought we were well positioned to do an upgrade. Disappointed we didn't. Actually, we pushed backward in our pay communities. Things that we feel we would be likely to turn a thing for. I write some other reports, like, they're the exact same.
Yeah.
But if you want writing theirs up the same way you're writing ours, didn't make a lot of sense, but we'll start that financial advisor. We'll try again. I think we had a good story, a good story. Those towns on the Wikipedia, we match up on. I think it turns to a light, but.
Yeah, we were, we were very disappointed. But I do want to say to the positive, AA plus obviously is still very well appreciated in the market. And I also want to say that I've done some research, and, um, so Citrus AA plus, Shrewsbury is triple A, and we actually got a better bond rating than them going out for a simple, similar bond amount.
Oh, interesting.
About the same time. I mean, they sold at 11.8, and we sold at 11.14. And we are right on the curve.
Oh, interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
No, I mean, you shouldn't be disappointed. You did it right now. And I'm not, I don't mean, I was more really curious about when they said the higher rated peers. I was curious, like, do we set up against? And, and even if you show that data, the triple A, we're getting some rate from the last stuff. We're very close.
We're close, but, you know, I mean, since Nancy and I have been here, we've, now Jim, we've wanted it to be, we wanted it to be triple A. So we won't give up. We'll still still fight for it.
Well, we saw the fabulous rate, so let's approve, let's lock in.
Yes.
Quickly.
Yes. Okay, about one for a reaction.
Yeah.
Okay. I have to.
Or is that?
Yeah, Mark.
General question. Um, do they downgrade anymore?
Uh, we also asked that question, and, uh, it seems like to us, um, and Nancy and Jim felt free to push everything. And, um, I think what's your triple A, or really, do you seem to get downgraded, do you think?
You have to have something.
Major.
Yeah. But giving that one little extra.
Good day.
You know, I mean, to be frank about it, we've always had this good bond rate. So, I mean, I think we've got more time.
Yeah, we've been here. We wanted that AA plus.
When I was on the advisory committee on the term of limited trade of clients, I said, who cares? That's what he said.
Oh, okay.
So this has been a real sea change here. So I just want to let people know that that this is not, just didn't happen. It's not magic. It's been hard work by this entire financial team. So I appreciate that. And I guess my other question is, do they upgrade around here?
Uh, we also looked at that, and there hasn't been any upgrades recently.
So, you know, there could have been some corporate being at S and P saying, keep everything the same unless you see something extraordinary.
Yeah.
So I, I wouldn't take it as a, than as a, or anything, just work for it.
You just really want it.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You really want it.
You want the A and E credits, right?
I get it. We just want it. That's all.
I understand. But.
It's my diet, fishing. My diet, kitchen, my life.
We appreciate your dedication. Please don't go that far. So thank you.
So we have the executive action of the motion to approve it, and then Ms. Harrison will leave the vote.
All right, so let's do the executive action. So, Page eight. Remember that, then she reads it, and then we.
Yeah, motion that the select board approve the sale of the general obligation bond from the 9/7.
Motion by Ms. Harrison.
Second.
Second, right. Ms. Campfield, all of us in favor. All right, it's unanimous.
No.
And get ready, folks.
I agree. The settlement, folks, it's prepaid.
Gotta do this by law.
We have to do this by law, so it's not. I, as a clerk of the select board of the town of Citrus Mass, the town certified that in a meeting of the board held on December 5th, 2023, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a forum was prepared, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear in the official record of the board in my document, noted that the sale of the $7,455,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2023 bonds of the town dated December 14, 2323, the bonds to Huntington Securities Incorporated at the price of $7,904,451,40 cents. And the accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on December 1st of the years and in the principal amounts and their interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2024, $455,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2025, $435,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2026, $430,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2027, $430,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2028, $430,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2029, $430,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2030, $430,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2031, $430,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2032, $425,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2023, $420,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2034, $340,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2035, $340,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2036, $340,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2037, $340,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2038, $340,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2039, $290,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2040, $290,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2041, $290,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2042, $290,000 at an interest rate of 4%. And 2043, $290,000 at an interest rate of 4%. Further noted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 2nd, 2023, and a final official statement dated November 14, 2023, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer and be hereby gratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking and compliant with FTC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient for if such procedures are currently in place. for if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the accident status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the bonds collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be the original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions to execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached thereto, was posted on bulletin board of the town at least twenty four hours before the meeting in compliance with section seven dash eleven of the town charter. And then I further certify that the votes were taken and made open to the public and that no vote was taken in secret ballot that a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in or on the municipal municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located on. Or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set forth in nine forty C M R twenty nine point oh three two B at least forty eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in conjunction with the sale of the bonds were taken at an executive session, all in accordance with general laws, chapter thirty A, section eighteen to twenty five as amended dated December fifth, twenty twenty through.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now you have writer's grant. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't pay attention to me. Oh, well, maybe too. Um, just, just. Reading me notice. So in there it says that um, as required by the charter, it's posted on the bulletin. The charter revisions actually updated posting requirements so that it also would be on the website or I forget what the words were, but um, I don't know who's.
On council.
But we might want to alert them that we have. He might be not reading through the legislative, it will be.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
It has to go through the legislative, that's why. So the council did their job.
I'll have to read it again.
All right, thank you.
That's amended and now nobody wants to serve it.
We don't have to move that or anything. We're just.
I'm like.
Then all the materials just ran over.
I know.
That, I would say that is perfect example of unintended consequences. I guarantee if someone many years ago said, we must have someone read this to to make this more clear for the public. Let's be honest. I don't know what to say. I don't know. All right, we are moving on. Interview boards and committee applicants. Now, uh, some of the folks that posted on here actually are sick, won't be able to make it. Uh, so Julie Conroy will not be able to make it tonight. So instead, uh, we are going to have folks from the Worthenhead Lincoln property committing. Uh, and doing so that I came from parent teacher conferences. I've learned it's good to see if we can all learn to play together. And if folks might be working together in a committee, so I'm going to invite Elise. Uh, is it, uh, Bolu or?
Bollier.
Love it. Who's to come on up?
I need another chair.
Uh, Alexander to come up. Alexander Payne, you're new here. Jane and Jane. Fitness.
We're gonna need a chair. We got one boy.
So you might all learn together, lunch falls, sit next to each other, see if we all get along.
Yeah, we get along.
We do. We play nice.
Yeah. We like each other.
We're gonna like each other.
Hi, where you. Nice to meet you, Alex.
Nice to meet you, York.
I know it too.
Alex.
Alex is fine, thank you.
So we're gonna, we'll go down the line. We'll go back and forth. Uh, I think there's a few questions that we usually tend to ask everyone and we'll see how this conversation goes, but we'll kind of go down the line. I think, uh, where it's why, not why now, why are you doing this, why are you setting forth, what is your vision for Worthenhead Lincoln? So.
And and what particular skills are expertise in breaking this process?
Perfect. Was that a good start?
Well, and perhaps an explanation from us, you is is that this this particular committee is being formed to bring recommendations to the select board. Once the recommendations, whatever it may be, are accepted by the select board, then you'll constitute a committee that will be more in line with whatever the outcome be, the board focus. So um, so you're you're like the advance guard here. Um, and it's really more to make sure that we've looked at everything, all the possibilities and what the financial implications might be. Um, and then if we decide, whatever the board decides, we're always on the board when it happens. So this is a preliminary sort of the committee.
I agree. Young man's work on this.
Excuse me, Mr. Curridge, could we help to introduce himself so I know who's who?
Yes.
Thanks.
So we'll start.
Yes, so I'm Jim DeShong, twenty Worthenhead Lincoln.
I'm Jim.
I'm Elise Bollier, um, I'm thirty eight, Worthenhead Lincoln.
I'm Jane Binder, I'm fifty six, Worthenhead Lincoln.
Thank you.
And Alex Payne, twenty Moreland.
Thank you.
Start right here. Kind of your vision.
Yeah, so I'm relatively new in Situate. My wife shows in the peanut gallery and she grew up in Situate. So I'm relatively new. I've been looking for ways to get more involved in the community. And this was one that's literally right in your backyard almost. And you know, it's very near and dear to my heart because it's such a precious piece of property. And those opportunities don't come up very often. It's a very, you know, once in a generation, more kind kind of thing. So it seemed like an excellent way to be to get my feet wet in the community, to get involved. And making a carry of the town that I'm very close to. Our skills, I have no skills. Should we go to that now or go?
Well, yeah, we'll go down. Yeah.
I'm asking somehow.
I spent a long time retiring. I spent all time doing project management, I should say. So I think one of the things that I could put off of the committee is a way of bringing a little bit of structure, soft structure, not too harsh, uh, but give a little bit of the, you know, project management perspective to this. Uh, it's very common for me to look at, you know, as part of a group, lots of different alternatives. How do we decide and choose amongst the alternatives? We all have different, you know, criteria that we might be interested in weight differently. So kind of earning earning cash is something that I felt a little bit of. So I'd be happy to offer that to to.
Thank you.
Hi, I've lived in Situate for forty two years, actually almost forty three. Anyway, it's around there. Um, and I live in the old Otis Mott house. And I've done research on Otis Mott. Everybody else knows that it's a Jim Brean house. And he lived there a lot longer than the Breans did. Anyway, um, it's historic. So I've done some work on the historic, well, the history of my house thing. And I also moved the lads, um, all of them before they departed. And um, the North High Lincoln Homestead is is a very important and unique place. Um, the barn, the tin houses, um, the property itself, I'm very glad that this town purchased it. I think that was an excellent plan. However, at the same time, it's an enormous responsibility. And um, we have the two houses um, there with septic systems, electrical systems, um, all of those components to it. And you have the property itself, which is expansive going down into the Gulf River. I'm also been on the Gulf River Association semi just um, when they split up the property from my old house, they did away with my access to them. Anyway. Um, so um, what I I am concerned about some things going on. I want to make sure that there's security. Um, because as a piece of property at the end of this area, um, mentally, so to speak, um, it's very remote. Um, there's always been somebody moving there. I don't think anybody really has the awareness that there's nobody there now. Um, and so that's important. The barn itself, I don't know what that is that is. I tried to look up the conservation committee report. There was nothing posted in the PDF. Um, but that's one of the things that I'm concerned about. I'm also, uh, you know, I'm I I think that the unit suggested that there's an online survey. I have a PhD in social research. Um, surveys were something that I did. I did a national survey for my PhD. Um, and um, I my question was, I don't know what support the town would give to an online survey. Um, I could tell you what I need um, and what we could do. Um, so anyway, that's something. And then also, um, do we need to set up foundation um, for funds to continue? Um, that when I was on board for the library, um, we set up a foundation when I was on that committee. So um, I that would be another question that I would have. So I would want to coordinate that as well or coordinate something like that so that we would have the income. Because I don't think we just make money and then give it to the town, right? And the town disperses it. That would be nice. Yeah, I mean, B U does it. Yeah, B U does it all the time. You get the grant, they take the money and then they disperse it. Um, anyway, but that's, those are some of the things that I was thinking about.
Those, and that's some of the questions that we're trying to just pin down exactly. Foundation, do we need one that, how to structure or how to manage it, should you go through all the stuff?
You keep that list for the first agenda, please. I mean, you keep that list for the first agenda.
Oh, absolutely. Why you have it down? I have it written down, but I went through. I have lots more to.
So I'm Jane Binder. I have lived at fifty six Worthenhead Lincoln for ten years, twenty twenty one year. And I spent thirty three years on the social charge in Boston for a very long time. Um, before there was any sewer, so I was an advocate for the more sewer project in the downtown, as I call it, village sewer project, um, and worked on a lot of fundraising, which is one of the things that I've been trying to do. I've done a great deal of fundraising and grant writing. Um, I've heard of a a core group that has been on social for many, long time, who's staying in one of the Lincoln houses in Situate for many, many years. And it was preserved and still is preserved. Um, and we do a great deal of grant writing for our small, you know, just our seating group, but it it it's, you know, it's a great process. I work in corporate America and I have major P and L responsibility. I'm an accountant by trade and my husband's a CBA. But I work in the sales world. So I'm really good at raising dollars and a lot of that within my property. And I'm literally in the backyard of this property, so I have a vested interest, my husband and I, um, to the stewardship, not just of the property, but the preservation and the legacy of the property. Um, it's been a staple since I can remember coming through most of Situate. We've had a major issue in the last couple of years of traffic and I mean, we've got our own little little guys that the dogs always bark out, but you just can't imagine the traffic that we would have. And I do worry about the safety because it is so dark here right now. Like, I almost want to don't put lights out just because it's so dark.
Yeah.
Um, and I didn't think about all the years that went through the things we took for granted. So that is, um, I want to. And we play along. We play that. Not that we don't just, we just, we don't, we're neighbors. Yes.
So, um, I heard about this opportunity from Lyle Nyberg. He's come, he's come to the historical, he's a neighbor of mine over on Third Cliff. And I love, I I bought, I read everything Lyle's written so far and all the stuff about history of Situate, various things. Great guy. And if he said you should consider, you know, throw in your application with this, he he he, he said, do it. So here I am. Um, I I live on Third Cliff. I live in a Welch house, which is a built by George Welch. Um, there were several of them up there, are still several of them. But some of them have been torn down. Mine is a probably the most, one of two or three of the most original of all the houses. I love preservation. Restoration, no thing, no thing. But I bought a house that was in pretty good shape, but I needed a lot of needed to be uh preserved, a lot of what went into those Welch houses, the beautiful woodwork and the the layout of the property and, you know, layout of the house and all that. So I've been involved with this house. I've been there for twelve years now. And uh, my wife and I, I just literally stopped painting a room an hour before I came here. Um, I'm very hands on. I, back in the eighties, first got married. Uh, we bought, my wife and I bought a seventeen sixty seven Dambro colonial house in Rhode Island. It was in Prancing, Rhode Island, Oklahoma, Michigan. And we restored that house. That was in rough shape. But I learned a lot about restoration and it was, it was a house that was on the well, we we got it on the national register and all that stuff. And I really got into doing things originally and researching all it. If you restore something, you got to go back and understand and do a lot of things by hand. So I do a lot of hand work myself. I'm not a carpenter by trade, but I'm very handy. I think I wrote my thing that I, I I do carpentry, antique restoration and even mechanics. I I rebuilt several cars and things like that. So I'm a very hands on person. I respect. Um, so background as far as relevance to this, probably not that much. I own my own business. I own my own business for about fifteen, no, eighteen years, importing silk from China. Um, before that, I was in the shoe business. I I got an MBA at English tough school, Dartmouth College. And and my my consti cation was operations. So I was in the factories for a shoe companies for fifteen, sixteen years, oversees a lot in Asia, but also in Latin America. So I have, I'm like, you know, like I said, I'm kind of a hands on person and I think what I would bring to this group is um some experience with restoration or preservation, depending what needs to be done. It may just be a preservation project. I don't really know. Um, but we'll know which we get into it. Um, and I also bring um experience as a, you know, business owner and all that. So I've done a lot of things that you guys have done. I have a PhD, but I, you know, fundraising now, but I've learned, you know, I'm doing marketing and finance, everything I had to do to own my own business. So, um, I'm really, this is a way for me, I think you mentioned something about getting involved more in the community. I have really, and I'm on the Rivermore Third Cliff, you know, committee up on the, you know, just to kind of keep things going for our neighborhood. That's about it so far. So this would be a way for me to get a little more in public town because I love this town. I've only been here twelve years, but you know, town seventeen sixteen thirty six. I mean, you got, that's like awesome. Just saying town started bad, it's appropriate. So. Um, one of the little things is, you know, those signs around town, those those, those uh. Um, one of the little things is, you know, those signs around town, those, those, those cast iron signs? I think it was the three hundred fiftieth anniversary. Well, we restored the one on Third Cliff. I was part of that process. I mean, it was a major kind of undertaking, but I had to come off and get painted properly. Cause up there, the salt air just takes care of business in about two years. So it's in really good shape. So that was a little preservation thing we did, which is kind of fun. I got to know my neighbors and all that. So anyways, long story short, I think I could work very well in this group, but, um, they maybe have another opinion. But it would be fun and, and it's not a long timeframe. I'm, I'm not, I want to get involved, but I don't want this to be something that goes on for years. It sounds like March, you need some sort of a, uh, answer back or some sort of a report from us. That's pretty short order for us to pull something together. But I think with this experience, with people to my left here.
Yeah, I think what we're looking for is a preliminary assessment. And with your background, especially, you know, is that the issue you brought up, restoration versus preservation?
Yeah.
And or, you know, to look at some of the other properties that the town owns that are currently managed by the Forest Society, that the town owns them and, you know, what other ways we can, um, use the property and, uh, to your point about it's dark up there.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, this committee, I think, has a very broad, uh, but work's been done to this point. But they've only, concepts have been brought up and the, the meat hasn't been on the bones yet. So, um, and it, it also, it's possible that it could be, that there are short-term recommendations, like lighting security.
Yeah.
Midterm, something else. Restoration would have to be way down the road. So, and, and you could, e- everything isn't necessarily, uh, doesn't mean that you can't do all of these things, but how do you gauge them? How do you look to your own?
Project manager.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. You just have a lot to do. I don't know if any of you are aware, I think someone mentioned the Bailey Ellis house, somebody had been, you know, vandalized.
Oh, I didn't know about.
Oh, really?
It had been vandalized. I don't think it was burned down. I mean, cause it's.
Alarm burned down.
Okay, but the, the, the house is still there. And the Situate Arts Association rents it from the town for a dollar, but they're responsible for all the upkeep. And they do occasionally go to see, receive for funding to help them with things that they can't, you know, do. But they do grant writing as well. So there's, there are different models of what we could do in town.
Yeah, I was a member of the Situate Art Association and he worked with Janet Nacho, um, over the years. Yeah, still involved actually, roughly. Um, and he teaches classes up there. And, um, they did provide an interesting model, which was that they have a tenant in, on the property, which really saved, or has saved the, the, um, Ellis from more problems. But there are still issues there, um, that need to be addressed, like the roadway.
Yeah.
Um, is a disaster. But not only that, there's a lot of dumping on either side. I don't think we have quite, who knows? Again, um, the whole idea of having an empty, um, I don't know, parcel of property. How many acres is it?
Five, so.
Which one?
Yeah.
Five acres plus, yeah.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's a lot of property.
It is, but there's a garage. I don't worry much.
Yeah. Uh, keep going on this, but at least there's a neighborhood there.
Yeah.
Yes, the neighborhood, I know for sure, has a lot of interest in this property. And I'm sure if something were happening there, someone would drop a dime. But it doesn't mean that you have to, you know, be the security force for it. But I'm happy about this enthusiastic group of people here. Uh, we do have two more candidates.
That's right. So we're.
We'll probably won't do this tonight.
Cause I, you're lovely, but I should have.
Two couldn't make it. One, two.
At least one, I know. Scandal, do you have some follow-up questions or?
Did, I, um, I thank you. First off, thank you very much for all of you for coming up. And I think that I'm very excited about the skill that we offer, right? Um, especially that we have a relationship with former owners, because we all know this, you know, what it is to respect the legacy that, you know, especially the fact that they were so generous to the town to give us the opportunity for the place. So, um, my question, my follow-up question, um, um, I will say there are four openings. There are apparently one, two, three, four, five, six people that are interested in surveying. We'll talk to some more later. Um, but for those who have served on boards, you know that even if you're not appointed, that these are all open meetings. So, you know, obviously there are folks that have skills that, that are, you know, don't get discouraged. Um, the question I have is just, if you could just give me sort of your elevator pitch. It's three years from now. You've done your research. You've, you've given your recommendations. You've all marched in one direction. We've got the funding. Everything's perfect. What's it look like there? Just if you could just wish, what do you see, what's your vision for that property down the road and all the hard work we've done? We'll go back and talk about that.
I'm gonna start. Well, I think one of the, um, one of the, um, things you were looking for is some sort of passive use of the property.
Yes.
I assume that means sort of walking paths or someplace people can park and walk and, and then, perhaps the building, the house could be a museum of some sort or the, the, um, maybe we need somebody living there. So the lights are on all the time and then, but also the public access, um, so that people understand that this is Abraham Lincoln's great, great, great grandpa's house. There's a Lincoln ad on Moreland, on, off of Moreland Road, wherever I live. Lincoln's a big name in this town. I didn't even know about it until I, I'm worried about it. Um, so I'd like to see that. I think that's maybe where it will go. You could have a caretaker or somebody living there and then, um, there's need, need for, um, maybe the restoration or the preservation work can be done. We have to probably raise money to do that. Or maybe there's something that budget, you could be, you know, building on it. I don't know, maybe, who knows? But also, um, volunteers, let's, we find a contract with the running town at the end of the season. And that's kind of, I, I have frequent contact with some contractors, but not that I guarantee anything. But I, I, I think, I think it would solve a lot of problems if it were occupied, reserved, and allowed the public to come in and use it. But, you know, if neighborhoods, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that it concerns about traffic and all that, but I think if it were, kind of, um, low-key or, you know, limited parking or something, it doesn't, so it doesn't be kind of dog walking, you know? Some people, they never pick up their boots, you know, trails. So anyway, something like that. Yeah, great.
I have a son who's a little bit of a history buff. And who knows more about the history of that than I ever knew existed. And he's only, he was like twenty. So I see it being preserved best for a while and really, really celebrating the history. Uh, I don't know enough about it and I did hear on social for years and years and years. I'd love to see us be able to capitalize on it, whether it be, are we stored home and we have tours? Or we have art shows, or we have groups that come in and do talks, poetry readings, things like that. Um, I'm not so keen on having it open space with, I, I get very nervous about the water and the liability. And then I get also about the cars and the traffic. But I think if it were more of a, um, you know, say it's Christmas and there's, you know, time to do some sort of a tour. I don't want to say a house tour, but a historical tour like that. I see it like, I really would like to see the history preserved and celebrated. Um, and I hear that it's also one of the number one, well, this is like relevant, but it's listed as when somebody does the South Shore ghost.
Yeah, it's legend.
Did not know that.
Legend.
Oh, really?
There are people that do this. I'm like, do you know the truth? And I'm like, it's a ghost.
Yeah.
The ghosts of Aiden, right?
But there's a lot of people that, you know, so there's a lot of ways that we can, you know, potentially have some money making on things. So that's how I see it.
I, I also, uh, I, I, I kind of, I have a hard time seeing major changes. So, um, I would sort of like to see it remain very countryfied because that has been the way it's been for me for forty-two years. So I kind of like that. I mean, I used to skate on Hunter's Pond and of course that's changed significantly. Now it's just a massive weeds.
And it's not many.
No, it's not a pond. It's one away. So, um, I sort of have been looking at the future as it be open selectively, basically. And I know that's not, that may not be a possibility, um, to the point where even people should have access to the, to the water. Um, one of my concerns about having access to the water and the kayaking, um, that maybe go on is that at the end of the river, as it goes toward, um, what is it? Again, you can get sucked right under that bridge and it's extraordinarily dangerous. And I would hate to say that open kayaking is a, is a good deal unless you're really very experienced. And the other way is of course, oh, has the harbor in the rocks. So that, so I think that has to be addressed at some point, in some way. Um, as far as the income goes, um, we have a fundraiser here.
That's what I guess. You can figure out how much it costs to.
Um, you know, possibility rental. I mean, there are two houses on that property, two livable houses. Um, so to be paying one, so that we do that maybe and then have tours.
Yeah, another thing, another thing.
And so that would be a limited, um, access. So, anyway. And the rental in, rentals would be, um, income money. So, so definitely, that's where we would have a foundation.
Right.
I don't have a very defined vision yet, so maybe I will exclude my qualifications skills. But part of the process that I look forward to is, is really learning more of what the alternatives are. Uh, what comes to my mind initially is, it's just a beautiful property. We've walked our dog twice a day, uh, you know, drive by the property there. And I can, I nearly every day take a photo of the launch from that. That little, that little pad, it's right there. It changes by an hour, out of season. So something about, you know, nature, art, photography, uh, to celebrate that beauty without it being busy. Uh, it's a one lane bridge there. If you mature or where it gets icy, it's dangers coming out of it. So things that involve, you know, traffic flow and cars is, is something that we have to really thoughtful about as a concern. But they're really one of the tricks, I think, that this is to how do you develop a, a short, medium-term plan that doesn't shut doors?
Yeah.
For future, uh, would be some reason for you to continue on the journey because, there'll be some things that will, 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 so I'm sure you don't have the foresight to see. So how do we kind of start that out? Something interesting.
I, actually, this is always one of the most fun parts, you know, here, meeting fabulous people who are so qualified. Even they don't think they're qualified. They are overqualified. Um, we're always as interested in the art of the possible. I'm not always fascinated with exactly, what is actually possible. If we actually do, as we say, a short-term, long-term, like planning and how do we achieve that? So I think it'd be a wonderful process. Again, we still have some folks interview. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
What do you, five, five people? I'm looking for five.
Four and there's six.
Four, and, and just to note that there's a representative from the Steward Commission, from Conservation, uh, that you had.
Yeah.
And then, and, uh, private values are facilities managers. They will also assist and support.
Keep us growing, right?
All three of them are extremely, uh.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you for coming again. All right. Thank you.
Look at you on time. I know, you're.
Uh, you just checked. Kevin Caffrey's going up. Are discussing about E C W sewer and carpet contracts.
There's nothing I love more than I N I. It's always very exciting when, uh, you know, enjoy that process.
I do, but I love I N I. That's how we get. Alright, we're done.
So what are we doing? At first, we're doing the, the first contract is for the I N I phase one. We put in our P on a while ago and we broke it out in phases on how we wanted to achieve the engineering and the projects. We are completing phase one right now. So this would be phase two of the engineering contract. We will continue using environmental practice, keep the same, um, same project going forward and continue doing I N I work. Help make, um, more capacity. We're very successful with the work we've been doing. We've got really good about it. We've found a lot of issues that we've been addressing. Um, one of the issues that we're addressing and we're working on, I need to doubt today, we found some major leaks, I need to doubt for the sewer. We have to do some water modifications in order for us to, um, repair the sewers. So that's one issue we had today. Um, doing some work on one of the gates, which we sent out an alert, but, um, all, it's all in the same process of I N I. So this is for phase two.
It's all big, good, okay. You know, very real partners have been excellent with work with, right?
They did phase one. They've been really, really good. We've been happy with the work, um, and been very successful. We meet with them. Um, it's time we meet weekly, even when we have a lot of crews out there, we meet bi-weekly just to make sure that it's going on.
We've done other projects.
It's good, it's just good to know that, you know, they know the area that they know.
Yep. Well, we've been happy with it. Excellent. Questions? Yes.
Can you just very quickly, what was the scope of phase one and what is the scope of phase two?
We, we can, and I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Will step in. We broke the whole town. We did an initial evaluation where we camered a lot of the sewer that we had. And we narrowed down certain areas that were leaking more than others. So we broke it, the R F P into different sections of town of where we would go after. So we would go off the low hanging fruit first. I remember we had a presentation, I believe, before the board showing what we were gonna do and what we would go after. So you can correct me if I'm wrong, cause I do have a tendency to ramble on occasion. I don't tell the lead. But I believe we picked one particular area, or it's actually two, a couple areas that would work, but, and this will carry us to the next phase.
That was phase one and it was occasionally bred. And what was the result? What, how would you describe the results of the, of the work so far in phase one?
It'll quite take us, it'll take us a year to find out how much we've been saving. And, you know, um.
What did you, were able to line?
We lined, we lined a significant amount of pipe. The other thing we're able to do is we found, one of the most interesting things is from the main line to the house, we found this a huge amount of, of problems with the leak. So we were able to make a lot of repairs, treating some of those as part of the project. Um, the lining, going up, yeah, going up, yeah, just replacing different things, as well as finding huge problems, um, with different pipes, and I'll use I D A V for an example, where it's in really bad shape. You get some really bad manholes and bad shape. Really able to get cleaned up and, you know, take care of it.
To piggyback off that, um, has amused for both of you, that connection and that would instituted the, have to have the inspection of that line.
Correct.
Has that been, I can only imagine that some folks have been surprised. Uh, how have you seen or heard, just word of mouth, I don't mean today, but what's word of mouth of people, or some of those getting fixed?
No, it's been successful because a lot of them are fixed. A lot of them have to be camered. One of the things that we recently looked at when we were talking to Will about is a lot of the plank pipes. Plank pipes probably haven't been used since, what, seventy-two-ish or somewhere around that. And it's only got a lifespan of forty, you know, forty years before it really starts leaking. So anything that's plain has to be replaced. We've gone on little reveal digs as well as homeowners, um, invited on some of those issues, trying to get it fixed. Um, but it's been a pretty successful program.
Ballpark, what do you think? Fifty have been fixed, a hundred, two hundred, I really have no idea.
Uh, I know we're at a fifteen percent rate where properties inspected, replacing their sewer line, which I think were about, and the twenty-something, thirty's services replaced so far.
Wow. So that, that made a hu, that's a huge difference for us. Wow. That's great. Wow. So that, that made a hu, that's a huge difference for us. Wow. That's great.
But those replacements are done at the homeowners' expense, right? The lattos?
Yeah, right, yep.
But it's to their benefit. If, if the town finds that we're leaking, they, they have to replace it, right?
Correct.
There's no choice.
Correct. So one of the things that we were able to implement this contract, we would find, if we found a lateral leaking the house um encambered and we would have to do our half, we would charge a normal fee for residents and then just continue up because it wasn't a huge cost, just continue to handle whole lines right away. Um, and we were able to do that with a success. Most people were very interested.
It's great.
We've been asked a lot of.
But a big impact.
Yeah, a lot of our bad, bad areas, I think, I think we made an impact. So I mean, it's hard to tell with I and I because it all depends on the weather and a lot of state policies. I don't think it's fun, but um we found a lot of, a lot of big, big issues.
Let me ask a general interest here.
I just want to offer a big thank you to all the residents in the project area. I know the sewer work can be disruptive. And can't use your services while we're out there doing our activities. So it's appreciated. Thank you for putting up with all the work.
Are questions on the first contracts? First.
Yeah, I just, I just have one question. On the, um, on the phase one being complete, you said it's a year, so we know like what the actual numbers are. Um, do we have proj, we have projected numbers that we're matching with the actual when we.
When, when. When we had the engineer in, he was putting out some projected numbers. I mean, I don't remember exactly what they, what they were. You know, but even those are est, complete estimates, you know. So I, I don't have a quick answer and say it's X, Y, Z. I can help you out a little bit there. Uh, this pay, phase that we're currently working on targeted with a goal of a hundred eighty to two hundred twenty thousand gallons per day. Um, realistic impact to our rolling average, you're gonna divide that number by roughly four. So like fifty thousand gallons per day ballpark for an actual impact for a twelve month average.
Uh, what is our rolling average threshold now?
We're about eighty percent of our rolling average. So we kind of just tipped a little bit over the one point three. But for most of the year, we've been below our eighty percent threshold, which has been excellent. In previous years, we've had similar rainfall. We, we exceeded our, our number before, so. Uh, we have more customers than we have in the past and we had a similar heavy rainfall summer. Uh, we're pleased to say that we didn't exceed our limit.
Good work. And you say we became eighty percent?
We were, we were hundred eighty percent for most of the year. Now we're, we're just a little bit over eighty percent. Last year's fall was with light rainfall. It's continuing to remain relatively elevated.
So see your point is.
Very much so. Right. The other thing, anytime we've been paid for roads, like we paid last week, we put all manhole covers, which are a lot of tight manhole covers on all the sewer structures that were out there. Um, we also found some issues out there. We did that, we better be aggressive near. So, um, on I and some other stuff that was sourcing I and I. It worked out well.
Please give us a question. If you have airtight manhole covers, water wants to go somewhere, where is it going now?
So instead of leaching into the manhole, it will, it will continue down, hopefully longer cat bases and then go through vanishes.
Correct, yes. But it doesn't go into the sewers?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It's.
So what if it's like a double cover, you set up, set up a seal, the aspect, keep the water off, just holds down, so it can't.
And why is it funny thing? When it can't go one way, it's gonna fight another way.
It always does.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just, seven years ago, we were all praying for sunshine. Because it was, it was every rainfall, we're like, ah, it's look at that, it's great work.
Well, we, we got a ways to go and, you know, conservative, we're always very conservative on, we're, we're hoping for best.
I know. Celebrate a little. Celebrate a little bit for every year.
Absolutely right. I mean, huge. It's unbelievable, I guess. Um, it's my whole team. Well, let's do some more. I have a motion for some I and I.
Yeah. Move to approval number sixteen, twenty twenty-three, contract twenty-three dash S S dash seventy-two with environmental partners for phase two sewer in open infiltration investigations and improvements for an amount not to exceed a hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars.
By Ms. Thomas, seconded by Scandile, all those in favor?
Hi.
I as you and us. All right, now, the facilities plan, sewer facility plan.
So the sewer plan we had run before the board for, um, and we talked about this during a complete evaluation. And uh, including processes, processes, and we put a pretty significant RFP out and we sent it to, I'm gonna say between eight to twelve firms, I don't have it in front of me. Uh, this is the response back we had from environmental partners. A lot of the firms that we did engage with said it was too large for project, stick on at this time, uh, due to the amount of work in requirements, um, that went in the RFP. Uh, we did get a competitive response from the environment partners. Um, their contract estimate was not to exceed four four seven seven fifty-four. We budgeted, um, a lot, two or three years ago.
Oh, so three years.
Three years ago, about six hundred thousand dollars for the rest of the B. So it's competitive bid. And we've gone back and forth on it, uh, quite a bit in our offices and years as well as Will, discussing with the guys that we should wait longer and we love to try to put another RFP out, but um you can see if we can get more responses, but you know, meeting with them, talking with them, we're feeling more and more comfortable with, with environment. Say the B for the handle of this. Um, and like, Will's guys put them around the plant today, just showing the areas where concrete is falling from the ceiling and we've got some structure to be packed. So we, we think we have to move forward on this. Okay. Um, yeah, thanks, Bill.
Yeah, to remind, I'm sorry, I didn't have a.
So we have.
But you've got this in your mind, did it.
My computer went down, so I couldn't print out anything else, so I'm waiting. First time to that.
Um, funding sources, it was really enterprise?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and how long is the contract? The.
Eight years, eight months, yes.
Um, and that, and Kevin will be involved in that as well, or the other guy didn't come yet?
Will drag him in.
Sorry, Kevin.
Will drags him in on everything anyways. He's gotta replace the boiler. He's, he's got Kevin all over it, so yeah, some work's on.
The, the scope doesn't include any, any investigation of extension, huh? It's really just to keep the facility, to maintain the facility to be out.
You haven't, you didn't have an expansion.
No, we're, we're meeting our firm, thankfully, so there's no need to provide new treatment. Uh, however, uh, something similar to a plant upgrade or refurbishing is slightly within the other. Uh, looking back at the history of the facility, that kind of tells me the story. In the past, we went fifteen years and then had a plant upgrade. We then went seventeen years and had a plant upgrade. Now we're at twenty, year twenty-six from the last plant upgrade. Uh, so I feel it's very important that, that that is, and it works for your, by year thirty, so we can make that break of the plan, back up to really work up to standard. And we're using some effective, uh, measures and treatment, but it's not always considered, um, most economical. We still use UV light out there. Um, and we've got all these UV light systems that follow our channel. The problem is, it's, it, it's very energy. It consumes a lot of energy and it's not typically used now, so it's becoming harder to get pots to, to repair it. Actually, Marshfield took their plant down, it was over there in this pickup truck stealing all the UV lights that they didn't want, bringing them back so that we have space. So, you know, we have that type of stuff. We're gonna look at those processes. Maybe we can talk about how to method, or use a method and that stuff, so.
And it feels like we just.
Can you look at the sewer capital? There's a lot of stuff in the sewer capital for my time. Recommended, because we're waiting for the source to, I don't want to replace something, that something else be a higher priority. So this is something to get going. So we can get back on this capital plan, sound, those are the ones, so. With the, the issue with the sewer treatment plant, while we're correcting, it's not capacity that we can put for the plant, it's what we can discharge. And we can treat a lot of what we actually treat, but just can't discharge it in the reverse of a cap. I don't know.
Would the, with the modern, modernization, would that improve the discharge at all, or possibly would there just be more efficiency? I don't know. I mean, we won't know until everything, everything's died.
I mean, actually, you know, not so, river goes out, samples probably weekly or every other week that they do lots. In the summer season. In the summer season, so in, I've always heard very depoist that the, the equipment's out of there, it's clean, I've even heard your people, it's cleaner than a lot of. Yeah, actually, no, you know, we do this, we modernize.
For state tests too.
State test also.
State test.
We've tested independent labs, so we, we, we're successful on the process and everything we have, but it's just, uh, it's gotta be updated. And the structural issues, they're also, it's just.
Will's always happy to give a tour of the, the sewer plant.
In there. All right. I have, actually I have a question. The timeline of this starting July twenty-three?
Yep.
Okay, so it's already started?
So we, we. No, we haven't done anything because.
Or you're gonna push it back like.
We held up awarding it because we did only have one, one company reply. So we were going back and forth. We studied it, we mapped them.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Graspedated, we, we were thinking about going back out to bid to the RFP because of the one response, but as things went further along, they were willing to maintain a price and um we decided to go in that direction. We want to see how the I and I project went also.
Yeah. So it would be like six months further for the end?
Yes.
Push it, you just push it.
We actually did the RFP back review. We didn't, we didn't avoid it because we were, we didn't want to hold any one, one response.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
No, that was.
Yeah, that's good.
I have, the RFP was pretty substantial. It was, it was well written, meaning, uh, very technical, so, uh, I've got a chance to read it. It's always exciting, I mean.
Yeah.
You have a new motion.
Move to through the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, contract twenty-three dash S S dash sixty-five with environmental partners for sewer facility plan update for an amount not to exceed four hundred forty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars.
So we, by Ms. Thomas and by Ms. Candile, all those in favor?
Hi.
I as you next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on. To the departmental budget reviews, start with communication with technology. Just give us a second. Hold on. One fifty-five. Seven. Yeah, good, are you?
Ready.
Good. Now, you know, the drill, love to hear the accomplishments, goals, uh, what you're seeing, what you're not seeing, and you know, go over some of the. Not the first spells.
So, uh, some of the, some of our goals are, are, some, some of them are recurring. Network security is obviously a big, big topic. Something that we can never just stop doing, that we are always, uh, fine tuning and, and changing and implementing, we change our tools as the hackers get better. Constantly, uh, uh, looking for better ways to build fault tolerance in, into the overall network design. We're, uh, soon will be hopefully replaced, beginning the process of sending the E O C's audio visual project out to bid. That, that one's been six and nine. Looking at refreshing our security, uh, infrastructure, uh, for physical, physical security and cameras. It's, uh, basically everything at public safety is kind of turning seven years old. And all the servers there are on the updated Windows operating system that Microsoft isn't patching anymore. We're running out of disk space and we're blowing hard drive, blowing network switches, so. Time for, uh, a refresh of some of those components over there, replace some of the cameras in the V S Ls, some of the exterior cameras that have been problematic over the years. We're looking to implement, uh, like speakerless, uh, and following the term, beach sticker replacement, stickless beach access, beach parking access, um, and, and somehow work with speakerless, um, transfer station access. And kind of along with some of the software that we've already appointed, the online permitting, or godlike, just a lot of the licensing that you guys are, uh, overseeing. And I'll be, uh, permitting process, we'll use that software and hopefully, and, uh, implement self-service, so if you want beach parking, you go in and your profile, like, maybe go like, not your profile. And there, there you're often, you know, burden permit or godlike, so building a very, you know, for access. And, uh, my goal right now, it's been a while, I'm working with the R M D. I think we can hook into the R M D and places make validations, so we can be sure that the vehicle registered here come to kind of fully automate the process, so that I don't have to do a review of state work. Um, if, if all the checks, have you passed all the checks? And congratulations, make the payment, we'll relay you our receipt and then your license plate, then we'll get added into the boost platform. Uh, we, software and hopefully, hopefully it works that smoothly. But right now, we're in the overall concept, so we have a little, a little check. So we're hoping to have that up for, uh, by next year.
What, what concerns you have looking into the registry?
Yeah.
That's literally like the only concern.
I never, at large, darn.
Security?
Uh, security, it's always.
It's always security, right?
Yeah, exactly. There, yeah. And you know, you're in the water and sewer climate, we're redesigning, uh, their data infrastructure, so it's the networks that control all, every, all pumps, house, water, the panels. Um, we're redesigning networking with infrastructure, open those, work even more secure posture. So doesn't mean we're gonna be, kind of, but more secure. It's basically a segment from hot mentalize, so if one gets breached, it can't, it's harder times for everyone. Uh, so that's a major redesign and that, frankly, it's a lot of, we went through a security audit and made a recommendation. This trip is a lot of what we had for small, such a small network, but still, most secure, the record ended, maybe.
Now, the, the budget front, you're, so, seven percent increase, but that's, that's mainly on technical services and equipment, which obviously, you can put the, um, some of the updated systems, everything else, and that's about a seventy-five thousand dollar increase from the year before.
It's essentially a level service, but with the exception of an additional thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for some of these, uh, security software.
All right, all better up? Yes, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, just so you know, I'm not on here because I forgot my phone and I can't do my phone after authorization. So it's working.
Oh, we, we could have helped you out.
Uh, I know, but this, it's been, it's less.
Do you want me to?
No, it's all good. I've got, it's actually round budgets now, so. On the water, but we noted that we would be, uh, working on the water meter software and that's obsolete. Can the department continue to re-digitally, or is, are they, can they?
As of, since right now?
Right now.
Yes, so this has been a, it's actually been a problem that I started, I started this in February. And I know that Microsoft is gonna discontinue software in September, October, two, two past. And then um we're just trying to get to a new platform. The the endeavor, that's really slow, we get back to us and help us facilitate the migration to the next iteration of the European software.
But they're not back to manual reading?
They're not back to me, there's nothing physically stopping them right now. The the downside for us is that we're running, they're forced to run an operating system that's almost supported by Microsoft. So we're not getting experience anymore on on that particular server. So, you know, at some point, we have to save it, and that's enough, we've got to figure out plenty. But right now we're still working hard trying to push the end point.
Yeah. The, can any component, this is probably Jen and Nancy question. Can any um part of the replacement of the AV system at the public safety complex, is that Ellen Wolf's money for uh SCTV?
They are paying half of that fund.
Very good. Uh so yes, yes, uh can I will, I will ask the question. Um there's no goal about working on Wi-Fi in the harbor or in the area yet. Is that because?
That's because that's all, that's my office is where it is, it's where it was, that's like his goal. His goal is to get five G in the harbor, which would make Wi-Fi redundant. That's gonna be a longer road. That'd be accurate, we have to see five G than Wi-Fi.
All right, that's my question to Jack.
Yes.
One not so serious observation, I predict if you want to try, people get their fee sticker. If they love to have it on their cars, then you can see who's on highway and who's a good person, etc. I think that's gonna be a.
Well, I mean, because the actual physical symbol.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll see.
These are like legit.
Yeah, it's it's. They don't want it for here, they want it for when they're driving stuff themselves, and they're going on baseball. Such a beach sticker in New York City.
I told you, it's a good seller, I can't, well, there are people who put ten years worth of stickers on their car.
But we'll be taking, we'll be eliminating approximately sixteen thousand transactions out of the transfer by the service by by your, you have a good business.
Yeah, we'll try, we'll try and exercise.
We'll give you the sticker.
Oh, yeah.
Eight thousand transactions for each and for a transfer station.
Yep.
Cool. I should have something serious to say.
All right, we'll come back.
Yes, I'm good.
Well, one of that was the Wi-Fi, you asked it, the Wi-Fi in the harbor. Um my second one, and I guess that's um for, do all buildings have handprints, do all the buildings?
Yes, maybe the exception of some of those, like the don't say sure the.
WPA building.
Well, the WPA or the marinas, there's also.
Which one?
Right, the um the marinas, there's no video down there, right? Or at least.
Video, I don't know, video at the.
No?
The marinas, so.
The marinas, but you don't see the docks, right?
We do.
We do. Oh. So they would be around the security and if that was a mission, it's not an issue.
Security around the docks?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware, but that might be a.
Okay.
Question.
Thank you.
All of our historic sites? Sorry.
Well, I mean, not.
I don't know, historic sites.
May I suggest that we should be probably be where we don't have? Just saying, I'd rather.
It's a deterrent to.
But if, but if we just equal.
There'll be one uh very shortly, we'll be covering everybody.
Yes.
They're gonna be where.
We'll be very secure.
No, the beach trash can is where you're going.
Oh, I have, I've got an idea about ring, ring dolls or door, whatever they are at.
So this is.
All right.
Any other?
No.
No.
I forgot too.
No. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Do you?
Thank you. Up next, facilities for ten. How are you?
Good evening, I, well, how are all of you? I did, awesome.
Uh, since I'm like age, but yes. So much to do in the forties.
Yes. Oh, okay. So our accomplishments, we start off with those is um we uh we have a new generator at the library for full coverage there, very proud of that, took us two or three years to get that in. A lot of issues, but that is in, that's great. We also had a new generator at the CAFPS location. The generator that was there already covered the highway, so the ground building in the office was hard to cover. So we also have a new generator there. Um with the help of IT, we have tied in all the buildings, except one. Uh open working managing system for HVAC with just a little more access everywhere, so that may sound like a little easier to do things. Uh community, re-community grants, we secured it on the road, we just just secured that, we'll be doing that work soon. And uh the gazebo, we're able to refurbish the gazebo with all ninety five percent in, no staff involved here. Oh, no, a fellow by the name of Dan Hamming, I knew was a huge help in that bus. Um and then as far as uh goals, excuse me. Uh we're very happy that we have a filled up vacant facilities admin position. And we also have implemented it, working very well as our new HVAC tech. And that has freed up all of us to do more things. And we're gaining some ground on the up some capital projects, some of which have fallen behind. We're getting a lot of that done well before we're doing more of those. As well as energy saving measures in the buildings, which is a challenge. Because people want to be warm, people want to be cool, you need to uh try to uh conserve energy. And some of the buildings are all, and you know, the newer buildings are easier because of points of use controls. But there's literally one third step, this is why I go. So it's.
I'm about to say people want to be hot and all.
So so that, but again, with uh more staff, those things are definitely easier to do. Uh we have already secured some new service contracts for plumbing and for um electrical with Nancy's gardens. And uh taking care of that, we are in the middle of working on more of those right now. As far as the line items.
It's all pretty standard, and it's all pretty, what's the big agenda, the public?
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is about eighty four thousand more than last fiscal year. And the majority of that is fuel and lubricants, it's made up of fuel and lubricants, twenty five thousand. Salaries for the position we just recently filled, furnishing and equipment replacement. And utilities for now that's ten to fifteen, ten thousand, so that's where it all comes from. There was some movement of in the lines because the utilities is all, are always hard, we try to make those work. And um trying to be a little more aggressive in some areas as far as energy savings. That's hard, but we're getting that, getting that, working on.
That's simply, I mean, people cost is always a challenge, though a little bit enough. But before I do, just is there anything? What concerns you that you're thinking about now, you're like, oh, really? Energy, energy efficiency, I think you mentioned that a lot, what do you really want for next year, what would you kind of think about?
Major failures concerning, because half dozen years ago, we had a little bit more money in a public building line, you know, which would work as a contingency if we need, so. Uh but right now, we're not, we don't have that luxury. So any uh major mechanical failures in most types of things concerning a little. But again, we've replaced a lot of stuff with green community, there's a lot of stuff in twenty one, we have a lot of new buildings. So it doesn't keep you up at night, but it's something that I'm aware of that could be an issue for the time of, yeah, to do that. And then um the service agreements, we don't have a real established line on that, we have some money in that. But as we continue to add service contracts, that line will increase as far as what we will need for funding. So we're really concerned about as much as we're keeping an eye on, because it's something to be aware of. Because it, this time next year, we're sitting here always.
Thank you, that's very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have two questions. Um can we see the capital, the the facilities, the food, the plan that you've been working on? But I don't recall any seen it in a while. And so I appreciate, you know, in terms of budget that you're working on that plan. But I'd like to see charters beside things, so I'd sort of like to see where we are on that original plan. And what's changed about it, and you know, where we might may have, where we might be like.
Sure.
Just, you know, at some point when we all that time. When, I don't know.
I've actually been working on those things so I can produce something like that for them.
Okay, that that would be great. Um and I just have, it's 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 an odd question to ask, but the more generators you have, the more vulnerable you are depending on what the energy sources to emergencies. So I guess my question for you is, are some of our generators on that natural gas, some of them are on propane, is it a mix of both?
It's a mix. So when you say more vulnerable to utilities, some disruption, sorry, should we, from utilities?
Well, personal, personal. Well, personal experience is, is if you have propane and there's a big emergency and it's it's open ended, we don't know how long we're gonna be out here. The propane companies will not just jack up their crisis, they'll tell you they won't let them out for two weeks unless you pay them premium. So I'm just curious to know what kind of.
We have one propane system and um we have a contract with that company and they pay very good attention to us because it's automatic. So if there is a storm or a family, we're aware of, we speak with them and they they know that it's important to keep that up.
Because it's great to get have a generator, but if we don't have fuel and it's, we're not so okay.
Right, right.
Just curious.
And we have a few diesels, uh some of the schools, public safety is diesel. Uh the new ones at the library and uh CAFPS, natural gas. Senior Center, Senior Center and um the PTA's natural gas. Most of them are natural gas, that's one propane, a couple of diesel. There there is some uh, I can't quote here, there's a federal guideline, public safety complex is needing diesel. Because any threat of earthquake, obstruction of a natural gas, and I mean, diesel is supposedly available. We would argue that if you can't get it to topple the vehicle, the diesel is.
Well, yeah, it'll get to that, doesn't it, yeah.
But um there is looks like this, but public safety isn't.
Thank you.
We're away for the sneeze.
We're not brightly well indeed lights, we're almost sneeze.
Um what year are we on the facilities plan, I've lost track.
We are currently in year three, FY twenty five would be year four.
Um and I was curious on the on the operational budget, the last line, public buildings. I just, it's probably an answering question, the the actuals in twenty two were significantly lower than the actuals in twenty three, is that just a reclassification? Or?
It it's it's reusing of funds in the lines of policy. So this is what I mentioned earlier, where my concerns of having a major attack, major event with a piece of equipment. You know, sometimes we rely on that public building part, but that is not funded as well as used to because we need more money in fuels, lubricants, utilities, electrics, cut up for twenty five percent.
That's not three years.
So that that's been moved around to help that.
Thank you for clarifying that, you did intend it, but I didn't.
Lost.
And the one comment I have, and this is not, this is completely outside of this budget, but I don't know if and and this is for conversation for another time, that time, that some towns have started uh putting uh public EV chargers in racers. And I don't know if we even started the conversation about it.
So I have four contracts on my desk with four EV stations throughout the town. And um we need to, so that Nancy, because there is some funding on our side, I don't know, a lot of it's being picked up, most of it being picked up by utility. But we have four locations, there'll be two stations here, uh two stations at high school, three or four stations at Will's Rock, and two at Wyler.
So I would, first question on that is that it paid like pay to play like cheap or pay so they make good money, it's not often for us, but it's a service. Um I would suggest that ABC would probably have been on top of the mission, would encourage extended, if possible, expanding that to the business areas.
Sure.
Does that, you know.
We we looked at the harbor, until the harbor was done, we don't want collective charges.
Yeah, that makes sense. But yeah, we want to situate and.
Yeah, the whole groundwater thing of the hospitals.
Nothing can use it with. Yeah, but folks do say, where can I go, and I can probably even go on March with something that we can figure out.
Yeah, Green Bush, we don't have a lot of, we we only put one, most of it will be pulled in the WPA five slot. And the gas station has two, three.
Yeah.
So most of it, we could all, maybe actually put in the WPA five, well, we, the place to do it. Yeah, we talked about that. Long bus go around that for a long time.
I have one and it's like the twelve on the mast next, I swore I saw something online, but it looks like it's in the 2012. So we might want to get that for the app, we put online. Or twenty fourteen, twenty.
I thought the facilities would.
I thought it was online too, except it's not.
All right, so we're, whichever one it is, regardless, I think it's great, great. They have it, but also to tell the great story, there hasn't been so much done. Very often.
Or has, and you even click, look, you click on the twenty fourteen, look at all that we did.
Right, and that's that's really a lot of.
A library right now.
You and your team have done so much, you can tell that story.
Yeah.
But their money's being well spent, that you're doing great work, this is where the money's going, it's just.
Right.
It's a good story for folks to know, you should know that.
I can do it without you.
Yeah.
Right, because I have a similar of this.
Really good.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate the support.
The facilities plan that was done in um twenty twenty, it three books, two books for every building that we did, which is about forty pound books. So it's not online.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't physical document it, but we also have on a flash.
We can get a Reader's Digest.
Yeah, but like maybe.
For executive summary.
Executive summary.
This is like a deck of the twenty fourteen one, and it has like a comp.
Right, that was done by the, that was done by the Public Facilities Commission.
Yeah.
We paid an outside vendor who did a presentation to the select board at the time.
Oh, okay.
Um so we could like post that overall presentation if you want.
No, it is posted, that's what I was saying, maybe we should.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the highlights, it's, we're looking for the greatest hits. One of the greatest hits out there.
We can't say them.
We don't produce something like this. There'll be a story.
Beautification, yes, Sue. How are you?
How are you?
Uh well, going to six fifty in our books.
Yeah, pink facilities, you want to leave that we put the tree up in the gazebo.
It does look good, and I can't take any credit from them, that was all my dream.
Although then the wind, the wind blew a little.
They were tying it down differently.
I backed up again.
They're beautiful.
It looks great.
Places look great, thank you.
That's the greatest that's up, right there, gazebo, I love it. Speaking of breaking bets, beautification.
Um, you want compliments first?
Pleasure.
Well, I'll do my bullets, um so we are maintaining twenty adopt lots in New Trump Town from um Mercy to Comera. Um we're working on creating them more seasonal by putting bulbs in in the fall, so they pop in spring. And putting months in in the fall to make it a little clearer. And we've been putting greens out front here, looked great when we came in. Uh we put greens um down at the um downtown, I think some of our merchants a little bit this um for first night, uh for last Friday night rather. And um additional things in Trump Town to be nice for our visitors. And additional things in Trump Town to be nice for our visitors. We just created a lily garden, it was a gentleman in town who passed away and we rescued his, his lilies through the senior center. Created a beautiful garden, if you haven't seen it, at Willow's Park, where we buy coal. And recently had a purchase, purchased a beautiful sculpture, it was stone that we call Hole-in-One. That is a complete piece. We, let's see, we'll just kind of go anywhere as well. Five hundred and seventy-eight volunteers showed up for Shipshape Day, which we were very, very pleased about. We weren't too sure in the beginning, it's always weather-wise what's gonna happen, and soccer and everything else. But the kind of funding this year was that Green Bush, did you call it, did we do Green Bush? Did you Green Bush? To events, first year. And they weren't, they were kind of nervous that we, they were overlapping us on the same day, but it actually turned out really nice that people could go to Green Bush and come over and do their thing, order up here and then go up there. So we're kind of working with Untold to promote that event. Birthdays, we had a member from our committee that went over to Kennedy's to promote birthday with a bunch of other organizations. Our flower merchant program, we had about seventy merchants that participated in merchant program, which is the fifty dollar voucher that we give, and that has worked out great. We continue to develop our railroad crossing, our railroad crossings, the traffic islands. We made it safe so that people can get by in their cars. And the problem with some of the traffic islands, they've become a little unsafe for some of our volunteers. So we're gonna let Mary talk about the budget a little bit. Because that's why someone's here to help us take care of that. We have two lovely picnic tables downtown that the clever master, clever master purchased one and we purchased the other. It's been great, it's nice to, I go down once in a while, a little cleaner and clean mop and lots of ice cream, but it's really lovely and the pumpkin steak that I put there and that, just that whole stretch is gorgeous. Yeah, so that's about it for accomplishments. Goals? Any questions about accomplishments?
Thank you.
We continue to improve, improve the appearance and longevity of all our road crossings. Yes, enhance the development of the adopt-a-lots. We've got a couple new adopt-a-lots that we've just supported. Plant native, trying to do some more native plantings around town so that they're drought resistant for water issues. Continue with that shipshape, they plant situates, which is our miracle. Let's see. We continue to try to get more volunteers and caretakers, which is a daunting task. Nobody wants to volunteer, they always think it's a wonderful thing and they wanna get involved, I mean. So it's probably a difficult thing for us, we have eight members now in our committee, so we're trying to just, lost one, being one, lost one within a very short time. So we're hoping to get another, we hope more people on the commission so that we can spread the wealth a little bit. Mary and I'm gonna let you talk about the budget. Are there any questions about it?
Budget's where I go, we're all interested in it. We've made requests for another five thousand. And the reason we're asking for this increase is because our merchant program will be increasing with all the new retail stores in town. We will have plants which will be switched to the native, and they're more expensive. In addition to that, plants in general, even our homeowners are going up in price. We may need to purchase bags or flubs for Shipshape Day because we did last year. So this is the year we probably need them. And then the hazardous, because some of the islands that we have in the railroad crossings down in Beverton, we have to hire contractors because we can't have volunteers out there waiting to get hit. I don't know how the contractors avoid it, but they do. And plus they haven't chosen. So our increase for the contractors has gone up considerably. We only had one person who even put in a bit. And that bit is five thousand more than we, five thousand to grab before, basically. So it's more than we have, you know, but. That's the highlight really, although we are planning to work with North Situate, we have some ideas about a couple of pocket parks over there. And the canopy, you know, we're working with friends off of North Situate. That's it.
More to have a look at.
Yes, I do think so.
We'll open it up. You're good?
Yeah.
You're good?
That's just one part, do we have a date for Shipshape Day yet?
No, but it's probably May, the Saturday, the first Saturday in May, whatever that number is.
Well, I'll take two minutes, if I had half the energy that everyone on that committee had all their long years doing, I would have been fabulous.
Well, we have to realize that I'm the youngest one on our committee.
Yes.
But my duty is, you know. I think, I believe these ladies and the things that they do.
It's unbelievable, they're the best.
Well, I mean, I sat here, what, two years ago, to become a member of this committee? And it's like my inspiration is like, I'm gonna get out there and do that, because they're already out there reading and climbing under trees and spanking whatever, just in.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
It's incredible.
Exactly. And it's all one thing.
It's a gardeners.
Yeah, they have a lot of energy. Yeah, I wonder, if you ever explored, and I know what the pitfalls are, but explore the community service. The high school students have a community service report.
And they've ever reached out and said they're, it's a great idea for the.
It's very good thing you bring up to our committee. It's interesting, because we just purchased our, the Christmas tree, that holiday tree that the boys got. And I thought, who's?
They're strong.
Yeah, they're out there with a saw cutting, and I thought, oh, they're gonna change it.
They are often looking, and I just kind of called today about the boys scouts and the eagles scouts and the eagles about projects.
I had a trip one day.
I will be.
Trip seven, I love it.
Yeah, I will definitely, we'll bring that up when we have our next meeting with the high school as well as the toy and girls' scouts.
I don't wanna discourage you, but it's tough.
I know, I said, I said, I know what the issues are, but.
Everyone who's got the volunteer opportunities always thinks about the high school and that it is just tough. And you've done that multiple times.
Dealing with teenagers and stuff.
Well, no, you're dealing with their mothers. Mothers that do you have, do you have your community service hours in?
Right. I mean, you gotta get to a mother's day. And that's, you know, that's a lot of, but. We are, I think, still working with the high school on building a shed. So, you know, where to go and where that's going to go, but that will be a little.
So when the high school's gonna build a shed, do they have a particular part for them or something?
About that.
It's a no tag.
Go to the boat tag.
Yeah, boat tag, they'll do it, yeah.
Well, you're running the largest volunteer day, Shipshape Day, in town. Probably the South Shore, I don't know whether that's a fact, but I'm gonna say that it's true.
You know, you just show so much people in Situate love their town. And, you know, it's natural beauty is not to be surpassed. And then people are so happy here, it affects all of our attitudes, that we want to make it even more beautiful and take care of this small place.
We're gonna find, we'll find volunteers, I know, we need more volunteers. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
We'll find some more volunteers. Right, historical buildings, ninety-one, I think I saw about there, Bob.
In the back of the room.
How are you?
Nice. You know, you know how much the Noel Health and Lighthouse. Coming along. With the event in the other meeting today, and it looks like it won't be go back in Christmas that most of this town gets more than tainted until spring or the summer, you know. The other project is a cove with, and that whole, it's gonna be what we call a decorative museum. And we've done this paper stuff from our archives that people haven't seen in a while, and it will be in there. I've been multiple times, PM, I've done, did an awesome job. When you go in, it's gonna be, across the state at least, it's really well done. Other than that, our properties, we open them five times a year and then on special occasions, and we've been very busy this year. Every stage is pretty much, the lighthouse we couldn't open, Los Alamos was blocked. We've had a lot of special groups, we've had the, in August, we had the British Council General who's staying there. They were, they did this tour, I'm very impressed. And we had the Irish from the Bureau of the Peninsula in September. They visited Maine, Boston, Ian's Church, and what's the, we were on their site. Warren Ealy is from, is from that peninsula, so that was kind of cool. We also had the mayor of Santa, Captain Rena from Cape Verde, his family visit. And we just hosted Irish exchange through this from Scuberry Community School. And I think Jimmy, you're right when you say there's a sign at the Shannon Airport that says Concentrate. Because they certainly don't. But they were all great, the Irish kids, a highlight, believe it or not, and truth, was they got to ride in the yellow school bus. They see it on TV and in the movies, and the second highlight was they got to go to Target. So I would put it out, I mean, the budget is pretty much straightforward, I think most of the increases is because of fuel and whatever, heating oil. I mean, it's not that big of a budget, and I think we've done a pretty good job so far with our facilities. So any questions, or what else?
Concerns we had, anything else you want us to think about for the new year coming up, just any, lighthouse, that one, but.
That is just, yeah. Other than that, I think we're in fairly good shape. Yeah, unless something unusual happens, which we've got a skunk infestation, which we did.
Things to sound like.
I have a few. Questions?
I have some, some, just some really conceptual questions, something, I mean, you guys do a great job. I know you, you know, we just talked about recruiting members, that was paramount, you need to make sure I have many hands. I was, just from a procedural standpoint on the budget development. So this is listed as the Department of Historical Buildings, but in reality, the Historical Society is a five oh one C, right? So they're really, and this is all just in the weeds, they're really a vendor to the town. Is that accurate?
They're also a less, a less need.
Right, that's right.
So the business for the maintenance of our buildings, not their buildings. That's why I said historical buildings, I think.
Okay, and it's technically under the Town Administration, it's Town Administrator's Department?
Yeah, Jimmy signed all the buildings, those are the top buildings.
I was just sort of thinking of that whole thing. So where, the buildings that you're our vendor, the left. We don't have an actual contract for, or do we have an actual contract for?
That's what we're working on, is the leases?
Okay, and that, that was the second, that was the lease.
Wouldn't go off into D and I before you were working on that collectively.
That's the leases for the facilities they can manage and that, that the other piece is, do we have an agreement in the Storm Society for what our expectations are?
That's in the leases.
Oh, that's also in, in each property, but we don't have an umbrella discussion.
But that's something that could happen when we, be able to.
So that's, I, it all came up because of the other leases, they were like, oh, we shouldn't do that.
We maintain seven rock pieces out, one kind of like, and all of us, but it does, we wanted to just talk about buildings by.
Right.
Then we have six of our homes, so that's thirteen. When the alarm goes off at three o'clock in the morning, that's when you see.
Okay, and so because of the leases, the revenue, each of the individual, like, so the property that's leased that has revenue, that has expenses, they're responsible for that balance sheet, not us, because they're less.
That's only on the maid's house, only on the maid's house do they keep the revenue from the tenant. And we are responsible for the maintenance.
All right, sorry, I just, it's.
It's crumbling.
I just.
That's why we wanna clean it up.
Yeah, we have a tenant, the manhouse, and that's the lighthouse.
They pay the revenue, the right to us.
And the other, the other question, I will leave it in your capable hands, I know that this is a non-going discussion. In the budget itself, there was some referral of an oversight line, and I was a little confused about the heating oil line, there was nothing, 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 and now there's four thousand, is that the oversight line?
I think that's more than that.
More than that, that's more than that.
That's got uses, um, anyone?
Allah, I'm eating oil.
Certainly.
That's it.
All right.
That was all the five, the reasons, because we didn't want people to think that this form of society is in China. So it was just more about, certainly excessive.
Yeah, that's, that's, I was confused, I'm like, where did this come from? Great, thank you, Bob.
It's a great, thank you, so much great work during the year, it's gonna be an awesome year, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question about, it seems to me to be somewhat unfair that volunteers are being pulled out of their beds in the middle of the night because some alarm has gone off. I think we're in the, what century are we in, huh, that these buildings can't be tied to the police department, to.
They are, they are, I usually meant to police there.
Oh, you think?
That's how, well, I've got a connection there, my daughter's secretary, so.
Is there a better way to do this?
I think.
And having volunteers have to.
Oh, it's, it's me, I don't, I do what I don't mind, it's one of the things that we don't. I don't think we, I don't think there's another solution. So, it's me.
All right, well.
Unless someone wants to stop.
Well, yeah, I said.
You're gonna wake me up, I'm out there like, I don't, I don't think she was going.
So, well, so, so what happens when town hall gets broken into? Does Jim Boudreaux get the call at home? I'm really asking the question seriously, is that what happens, he gets called because he's the.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call from the police, there's gonna be a lot of, go to the police department, and I get a call from Mark saying a car drove into the front of the water cotton bin. Actually, what I get is a text saying, are you up?
I start with a proper.
Yeah.
So yeah, something like that, I would, I would get a call. During the day, I might get a call from the alarm company, and they'll say, we're gonna notify the police. And if I know someone is at that building, and they provide to turn the alarm off, to say, tell them send the police, which happens a lot.
Right, right.
It's good, it's good, that's a good question, you're right. But we don't have cameras in, do you?
Maybe there.
We don't tonight.
Are we, are we sure we don't? I don't have a lot of systems that work.
Skunks in the building at nine in the.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Bob.
Now that the town hall catches on fire, Chief Manon McConaughey's just like.
A little water. I don't know, I think the place is going to, I heard.
Too tense. Or, yeah. Oh, right. Hold just for a second. So, yeah, accomplishments, what should we be, what keeps you up at night? What worries you?
Next thing, Ray.
We only got twenty-four minutes on Friday.
I know, no, seriously, I mean, that's, we, there's a lot of good, I wanna get to the best, you know, what's, what should we be concerned about for next year?
All right, well, yeah, well, I'm sure that you've all done all your readings, so I won't hit every point in here. As far as accomplishments, we definitely did a lot this year with top building training, working flat building, fire department, school department, getting into the different buildings, and we're really trying to engage more with community, doing, figuring churches now, to get out there and event. Getting into the different buildings and we're really trying to engage more with community, doing things, churches now to get out there and then that. Something like all that happens. Um but that's really kind of gained a lot of momentum this year and had good success with uh super net burden. And get engaged in the schools pretty good. So uh that was huge for us. Lot of training. You know, when we look at what we're doing, supervision, training, policies, training is incredibly important for us. So not only is it our mandated. Uh forty hours of in-service training, but it's all the special training that we have to do and wanna do to make sure that we're putting the best officers out on the street. Uh we had a lot of success with that this year. Uh our one mine campaign, we're almost there. I think anywhere we're gonna hit that. That threshold that all of our officers have been through other curriculum and um for the first day mental health training they have to do so we'll. Find and get that accomplishment, which has been huge over the past few years. A lot with grants, uh we've had to success of highway safety grants getting things like sign boards, data collection, portal regulators, liter devices. Had a lot of success there. Um and then things coming to coming case uh coming to the other four ports security grant. Another big success there making votes actually splashed today and so we're we're making progress. So. A lot of good success and a lot of great accomplishments. Um in addition, just to the day to day work that goes on. Uh so I think sometimes we, you know, I might come in and highlight some of the special things that we do, but there are terrible things that are happening and that are just those. Uh the interactions with community members kind of our really trend is we're empowered and successful. In terms of goals, what we're looking for this year, um. One of the things that's that's on there is emergency preparedness and just making sure we're ready. Whether that's the incredibly bad data we don't have to communicate with uh from the mandate standpoint or a natural disaster which we know we see storms and things. But just kind of running through that playbook of what are all the bad things that can happen? Are we prepared for them? Let's game them out and then make sure that we have all the pieces in place successfully and. We have a lot of issues that were started over the past couple of years that we wanted to see come to fruition. So as I mentioned before, we've got the. Uh both gun and water, we're getting a bunch of training that we're working on. Uh our. Wellness, which we talked about, we've got CAT RMS, capital budgets that's out there. So I'm gonna put that on there. Then we have these onboard projects. We want to set up their initiatives and hopefully wrap up this year. Policies and procedures and then really kind of one of the big things is just engaging with the community more in different ways and even if you blow those partnerships. So whether that's through social media and just messaging better or more consistently and engaging in doing things. We've got a lot of requests for doing everything. From the Stasis Police Academy to Youth Academy to uh Junior Officer Program. We're hearing a lot of those things that they can engage with us too. So we wanna make sure that we're putting those together and continuing to build those relationships. So I guess now we start to get into the risks and challenges, which starts to hit that, you know, like we're kind of like, you know, keeps me up at night. I think the biggest thing is just people and it's our people. So recruiting and retention, how are we gonna continue to manage that and make sure that we're putting the right officers out on the road? Um how do we continue to keep them there, keep them growing, keep them evolving? Um but how do we keep them safe? Um and not just necessarily physically, but are we doing all the right things that we should be doing from a mental health standpoint we talked about? Um so when I think about like, you know, what's keeping you up at night and making sure our people and what we're taking care of our officer to be happy, that's definitely critical. Um any other thing is just are we doing the best that we can to deal with the community? So we're trying to execute on some of these really big visions. Um so we providing the right service and how we're gonna be able to keep providing that service. Knowing all the challenges that are facing us. This will end point to um just what's happening in society and then go back to putting the right people out of the road. The technology and data is just one of the other things that's out there. Um we've got, you know, focus of prime up there at RMS. Uh that system now is nearly twenty years old. Technology is moving forward, but when you look at how are we gonna provide the best level of service? Uh one of the key things that we can look at is are we getting the right data in? Are we managing things efficiently as we should be doing? And so having proper technology and proper tools in place has been allowed us to do that better. So it's kind of where we are with some of our risks and challenges.
Project point ten MRS to the to the lane.
Com- computerated dispatch records management system. So it's really the the nuts and bolts of what's happening. So you kind of have the the front and the back end. So your add is what's happening in dispatch. So it's all those calls are sort of calls for trucks that are coming into nine one one. Whereas officers are initiating things for fire departments, doing things. That dispatch starts to take all the data in and that's where the record starts. That then flows out into the records management system, which is everything from. You refunded to your house for a larceny to a car accident to arrest to any type of investigation that happens comes through that. So that system is twenty years old. The system that we're using, we replaced in twenty uh I'm sorry, two thousand and eight. Uh we were kind of behind the times when we did that. Um we kind of heard from where other departments are, so it's really pretty. So when you look at what's out there now as far as, you know, platforms and solutions, the incorporate artificial intelligence that really makes things better. Um in terms of how we can be running it up, um we need to be full basis for our.
Is that reflective?
So we actually have a capital project for that last year. Uh so the planning is in place. Over the course of the past year, we've been. Really looking at what's happening kind of in the last state in Massachusetts as far as what the technologies are, what other departments are doing. For us, data sharing and data management is critical, right? So um you know. Particularly as we look at people that were involved with and dealing with and trying to do backgrounds on. If we're not sharing data with our counterparts across the state and further. You know, information is the key, right? So we're really trying to make sure that we're making a smart move with that and things have been a little bit delayed in the state as far as what's happened. So it's starting.
Thank you.
Did I see somewhere in the narrative that we have more humvees or whatever in the department?
Yeah, so so our our Humvee.
Yes.
Yes. Uh so I mean, this goes back now. Kind of started and we recycle through some of those over time. These are um. Basically kind of big dumb machines, right? It's a big diesel motor with some ten around it and that's about it. Um there's a lot of electronics, which is great. That's what we're looking for. But as you might imagine, when they go into saltwater and that's kind of where they're living their lives in a lot of cases, they don't last very long. Um so we recently had an opportunity uh to get a few more um through the GSA program. We use croc uh asset forfeiture money to bring them up here from Pennsylvania. Uh so we're looking to cycle those out. Uh we have a project going on right now with the gold tech that they're going to probably be empty notes. Um and then we'll bring in the house to a little bit more refurbishment. So uh it's critical that we have those. Those for us are our high water response. Right? We can't manage these storms without those. Uh so we wanted to be able to field vehicles, handle Humrock and handle up here in the mainland. And it's not just getting through the water. I mean, if you think about what central apples like when the tide recedes. You can't get down a certain car, but we need to be able to get through those. Uh I'm a little bit rabid about not putting the resources in saltwater. Even just going through an inch of water that starts to come up, it gets onto the electronics. You don't notice it today, but six months from now you wonder why the lights don't work anymore. Things don't happen. So being able to put these kind of. Vehicles in there that can handle the saltwater a little bit better or if. They don't last quite as long, that's okay.
So these are good thing for town. I think that there are a lot of people who think it's kind of like, oh, it's fun to have this stuff. But our particular town has a very particular need for these types of things.
It's a yeah, it's a very particular need. And if you think about the geographic nature of just having Humrock. And then the lighthouse area we have four mine it, that. Being that far dispersed, if all of a sudden we need a response down in Humrock. Those things don't move very quickly, particularly not in bad weather. So it's gonna be a long time. So being able to stage vehicles down there to have that response. Um and then the same thing up on the mainland north at the central region is what we're looking to do.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Um. So the big question and a couple of little questions. Big question, we we've all discussed at length that got the report that the staffing shortage program federal legislative changes. And you proposed in here to address that. Uh I mean, when we've gotten through the whole bar budget process, we will have that precision. Those folks, we need those folks in the summer the most. So if we are successful in funding and successful in recruiting. Have you thought about the change to perhaps services in the off season?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent. So I mean, we obviously see this this pump in service that we need to provide in the summer. But I think it's it's really just kind of pivoting in the type of service that we're gonna provide. Um but this gives us the ability to actually spread out and has some of these recent hand services that we really need. So. Certainly that's seasonal work, getting out in the water, getting into the business areas, getting on the beaches is something that we're seeing is a problem, right? So we're losing that seasonal help. Um but we're seeing areas that we wanna be a little target and I look at it as kind of this community impact. Right? So if your regular patrol officer, the person who's on the radio car is very reactive by and large in the nature. They're handling calls for service that are coming in due somebody has a problem, they have an address. Under kind of this community impact umbrella, you're putting officers that are going out and dealing with things reactively certainly, but also much more proactive. Engaging and building relationships with people. So that can be a social services officer. So you're hearing a lot and that's, you know, obviously mental health is dry because we have Erica who's a town social worker who we have a lady is on two for time. But there's not as much of a connection as they have. Something that the DEI committee has brought up about having that social services piece. But also the standard we've had for years. But again, it's very difficult to do in this kind of part-time major and half hazard. You can have somebody who's much more dedicated to be able to do into a particular neighborhood, is forming relationships and handling all those problems. So when you have somebody who's in Sandville's or Minnet or Third Cliff, they're dealing with potentially different issues. And they're not necessarily life shadow issues, but they're definitely quality of life issues. And for the residents who live there, they are bigger issues. So having somebody that they know and they can form a relationship with that they can call and say, hey, this is what's going on in my area. They're probably more likely to call because they're have they're comfortable. They have that relationship. So when you bring in social services, you bring in more directed traffic patrol, um you bring in better engagement with the school and other things that you can do there. Natural resources, all of those things that come up under that community kind of impact umbrella. Even though we have this, you know, big wrath hit in the summer as far as what we're needing to do. When you spread that over towards the year, there's a lot of work that we need to do and can continue to do that improves a lot of the services that we're trying to bring to. Uh and that's what these officers can do, uh not just seasonally, but across the year. So when we look at that, it's that's kind of the plan.
And then the small questions if I can you um. I'm just at one of your your goals is to explore social media and all of that. And I would just remind you that we now have an in-house person. Keep her in the loop.
You know, her last week.
Okay. Great. Um. I love that you're using data and congratulations again on the FBI Academy. Proud of that accomplishment. Um on the number side, um. The revenue online security is not gonna vote. There's um for physical, you're to be uh four hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. That is the new vote. Um it's a lot of money. I wanna make sure you know what it lasts.
Port security grant.
Yeah, yeah, the grant for that. And then um on the operational budget, uh under the equipment line, you have requested. A hundred and twenty two thousand dollars more than is recommended by the town administrator. What what is it that you won't be able to?
Please.
With that.
I only have two clues.
Oh, okay.
To explain that.
So we stay out of the saltwater.
Stay out of the saltwater. I mean, the hope is that when we get the governor's budget, that's something that we'll put back. But when it comes down to bodies or cars. We're doing pretty good in the cars. If we get a skip year, will it hurt? Absolutely, but.
Okay, thank you very much.
Wait, the change, the not recommended is not personnel?
That's good.
It's.
Yeah, so he's he's full compliment that he has now is recommended. His additional personality request is not recommended.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Correct.
That was my question. Um it was two additional personnel, right?
The the total we had was six.
Oh, was six? One and two.
Is that?
It's two one.
That was always in the benefits. So if we don't. If you were to hire some of them or I guess I'm trying to get to the need. Is the need at six? If you had four, would that mean your overtime would go up? Or if you did none of them, your overtime would go up? Have you done that calculation?
Yeah, so the the challenge with this too is it's not necessarily a straight line to say. We're gonna fill these positions and if we don't, it's gonna be overtime. It's gonna go up like this. Because one of the challenges I think that we're facing is going back to that people problem. Is there's this seismic shift in in personnel these days as far as how people are working. And historically, particularly in law enforcement, the model was always you're hired forty hours a week, but your officer wanted to work sixty or eighty hours a week. So there's this dependency built in on the way that staffing has always been on that your officers would work one and a half times as much as they just kind of normal person. And there's, I guess it's healthy and positive shift in that officers today are much more interested in work like families. So they're not necessarily interested in working eighty hours a week. So even though on a Sunday, Saturday, I can say, you know what? Let's put ten additional people on the street. Unless we're wearing them in from our houses.
Yeah.
We're probably not gonna fill all of those needs. So we can't necessarily say let's just budget extra in overtime to fill those because we probably won't be able to to fill.
So instead, it would be that we wouldn't have officers. Enough officers.
Well, you you get to a point, I'll speak for Mark, but you get to a point where you order people to work. Because we need a minimum number to work. So necessary you say, sorry, Mark, you know, I don't know what to say around the ship.
And in the.
Then they find another job in a town that doesn't make it work.
It's probably creating snowball about same token too. If you think of your your midnight shift, doesn't even have enough people to log in.
Yeah.
What your day shift needs to be on a Sunday, Saturday thing. So to employ you and we're ordering the people.
Yeah.
You're still not hitting the number. And there's a possibility that they got ordered the night before because we were trying to have enough people around to be in the harbor. So it's it's a snowball.
Nothing that happens at midnight.
Nothing that ever happens after midnight.
Okay, so of the six, we six are needed to meet the state requirement?
It's not a state requirement. It's just we're we're looking at it and saying like, if if we have this, this is what we think we could do. And trying to offset that um by what we've historically had.
It's a lot of philosophy, twelve part time, the six full time, nice where we used to be. So it's like just for four.
It's 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 essentially it's uh there's some, you know, kind of fuzzy map there to say this, well, now it's six. It's.
Right.
But we're trying to fill the fill the void as best we can. And come up with a balance that says, you know what, I think we can go out and do what we need to do. Try to be in more places with somewhat fewer resources. Uh. But again, it's it's being able to deliver to a level of service that you need to search.
But if it not been the training requirements that are required whether you're part time, full time. We probably wouldn't be doing this.
We this play, yeah, right. There's that.
It's it's that legislation.
Right, oh, yeah.
And where we're where we're at now, a few years up from that, is people who had part time have either just kind of moved out of the field because they're gonna lose certification. Or they've gotten to the point that they are fully certified now. If they're fully certified, they're working a full time job somewhere. You know, they've been picked up by an apartment that's got staffing shortage and it says perfect.
Well, the trade off is is that we're getting better trained officers and we're not sending people who aren't well enough trained out to deal with the public. So I mean, and I understand that, you know, it upsets people that you have to pay more for more training, but I think we have probably better.
How could we? We're the public safety communications. Much easier, much easier. This is not true, plus. Can't think of a more like how stressful job.
So I guess with this one, there's really only one thing with this. It's people. Right? This is a hundred percent comes to the people. So they do an incredible job and to your point, um. It's probably being out in the field and doing all those things is incredibly stressful, but when you pick up the phone and you don't know what's on the other end of it. And you're dealing with either, you know, my dog lost weight or. Something hard going there. You're having to do that, you know, you gotta be that a medical dispatch that locks on CPR or something else is happening. And someone's having their worst day. Um incredibly stressful. They're the first people on its team.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the first really to change in the first responder. So our folks do an incredible job, but again, staffing, getting the right people in, retaining them uh is huge. Uh so that continues to be the focus of what we're doing and then supervising. I think we have collectively with the fire department. The EMS responsible, they do, I think you all have a vision for where we wanna see our. I think we all have a vision for where we want to see our communications center be. And that really becomes the goal of getting there and driving that forward so that we can do that. Because they're responsible for not only the community, but officers and firefighters and paramedics who are out there and keeping everybody safe. So their, their job is, is huge. So challenges come down and people, it comes down to training and policies and what we can contribute. In terms of budget, it's pretty straightforward.
So this is still somewhat new, this joint dispatch here, it's what, four years maybe? Seven, is that six?
It begins with.
Yeah, twenty, twenty seventeen when we moved into the new station, Arctifon seventeen.
Okay, so I don't have to ask the question, how's it going? Because whatever things need to be worked out, got worked out, right?
Yeah, but I think that we've smoothed things out a lot in terms of, of operationally. Technology advances, yeah, yeah, technology. I think this is definitely one of those areas that you're never going to say. Maybe we've always wanted to be looking at this better because it's so incredibly important to the operation.
It wasn't easily done, is my reflection, so thank you to the departments who worked together on making.
It was a worthwhile investment for sure.
Thank you, everyone, of all.
Yes, love you all.
I do every day.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, that's great.
No, yeah, yeah, the continued work in progress, like he mentioned it to the advisor more that we've got some medical challenges as well. Back in personnel, just did some understealing that we're working our way through. Got some good people in there, just keeping it healthy. But we have a better, for a much better product, I think, in the regional system.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, please. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Two twenty, sorry. Two twenty, that's us. Okay, I'll, it's late, I'll just, you know, run through the goals quickly and. These problems, yeah, so first goal is a really emergency management goal. This is something the project chief Murphy had started with a grant application and we were turned down last year and we re- applied for it. It's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant to improve the generated capabilities, the gates, the new gates school. It was a generator built with the building, but it was someone to run critical systems. And this additional generator gives the capacity to let that building fully operation. We've provided a floor plan to the state and laid it out as a shelter and they find it to be a very favorable location. So this could ultimately be our shelter in the big storm. The, so that, that's what been applied for right now and that made that one of the goals to get that operational. On high school, this is, this is a, it'd be a much better facility. We're now training all the firefighters in the firefighter supply program. Received a EFT grant last year to train, we did a group training with Marshfield and Situ, brought in, actually brought trainers from around the country through the ICA. And basically, we want to reduce injuries and deaths of firefighters getting cut and getting fired and just identifying warning signs, how to sell. Angling so, you know, I've considered here, how to bail out or kill the ones last year. So now that we have six members trained, we've just passed that training line and my goals here that aren't seven of them are just trained. Last one is, the third one is to reduce apparatus accidents. I just, this is becoming, well, not becoming cheap, but it's captain work my way up. I see it's a lot of communities need to make some changes. Not just put the responsibility of the driver being hired, everybody on the truck back vehicle. What it means to me is most passenger vehicles sold today have early warning detection, impact protection on our million dollar, eight hundred thousand, million dollars worth of fire apparatus. Backup alarms and, and, and others, which, you know, all kinds of other technology. So we're looking at something out there. We're spending, up our train, we want better apparatus operators, very expensive vehicles. Difficult fix and we don't, and to get them fixed, parts tied up in shop, we just can't afford that. So we've got them up to. We've got to go beyond that this year. Lastly, as we now, I think we're way ahead of the other communities with our own programs. We purchased a grant, we're now being followed by the, our, these, the master. You know, it's now a hybrid response. So we've overseen way ahead of Coast Guard helicopters, K or whatever, in a lot of times to avoid, you know, it's not a person, it's a light jacket or it's an object or a hero. So we've had that team for over thirty years. And there's now a lot of opportunities and training opportunities. So we really want to consolidate a lot of these special operations into one marine unit. And that's one of the goals this year, we want to get some more on top of drive trains, swift water train, which we saw in Lancaster and that heavy rains in August. You know, neighborhoods had turned into rapid flowing water and it's an opportunity for us to train our members. You know, we're trained to work in survival suits and do a bit just now, how to how to rescue and remove people through, you know, icon. So we can, we'll see that too if we have, when we get coastal fighting, defensive buildings, swift water, so we're going to work on that as well. For, for risks and challenges. Yeah, worldwide, we're going to, I'm immune to it. We've got right now ten vacancies, three firefighters started yesterday, three more in January and probably more in spring. So we've got to train these guys, there's a shortage of paramedics, so they can step to hire EMTs. Right now, trying to break kind of a little pilot program, hiring two EMTs who will go through the paramedic training while firefighters and situating. We hope to have them trained within two years. And this way we'll have them trained and helps them ride and go faster. And that's, that's one of our, like, I just got, try to obviously do the shortage of training staff. There's a lot of people who want to work here, they, they, they're pretty big commitments. It's a buddy year in that, you know, paramedic is, is expensive and with a group job, arguably, it's a big decision. We've got that underway right now, so I hope to fill a lot of the vacancies at springtime. The coastal storm, ongoing challenge, you know, I talked a little about that as a grant application and the goal. One of the challenges, we have our ongoing safety program that's going on in the middle of the years. We're competing for a lot of that grant money right now, so we're, it's kind of one of our challenges right now. Define a way to fund that program, it's very successful, which kind of leads into one of our accomplishments is the safety program is now being expanded with at this program, he uses preschool through grade three, teaching fire safety education to, to the young children. It's very successful statewide. And we've now expanded that senior safes and I'm including the seniors and now we're going out to the community and assisting them. A lot of times we'll discover while on another call, going on the phone and go, hey, where are your smoke detectors or who is resident when that smoke detector went out? We're, so we now have a program that funds that, so we're even in a low spell, smoke department, not that almost drink and you got to see which is our boss or one that we identify as a leader. So that's, that's going on, it's ongoing. Back to our, to one of our early goals is staffing. We've now participated in a firefighter cadet program, which started last year, it's up to LoTech during evenings. That was open to all the South Shore communities that participate in LoTech's program. So Situ High School, I think one Situ High School attended. I'm running through a complete cadet program and we, this is, it's planning to do it again this year. So a lot of our old, old firefighters who were donated, you know, they didn't build, but we serve them, which is good, so. We hope to work with that and we're working now with guidance counselors at high school and getting a, a few packets of, of a firefighter. The, in April, we participated, we took advantage of school vacation. We did a four-day active, active shooter response training all year at this campus. And it was very successful and ran through all the shifts of the police and fire and we coordinated. We actually did multiple scenarios and worked it out, did it at using incident management, which has been part of fire service in years, but it's kind of still working that. And he, and that's carrying on, and actually that's the, the incident management under the national listed management program. Is he actually falling out into the school emergency action planes? So you're going to hear more now of emergency managers in schools during the Brockton hospital fire. The key person in that whole event was the emergency manager, the director of the hospital at all the emergency action plans. That operation compared to all of this, a hundred and eighty patients evacuated throughout the day. So we're going to hear more and more of that. So we're continuing to work with them, firefighting here, emergency action as well. We also, we were awarded the Department of Fire Service's safety grant last year, nineteen thousand dollars. This is something I never thought I'd be talking about when I get hired, but we now have all firefighters now that all will stick here. They're looking at basically, both of us, both of us have come with a lot of firefighters on these. So in the event, we have a bad day, people aren't really prepared. But all they have, do you have other questions?
You answered mine and the concerns and that's the case is.
You did a great job and I will answer my questions. I'm curious about the workforce training for paramedic tech. Is that, that they're, you know, training the cadets through the, the paramedic program? Is that, is that being replicated around the state or are other, is that, was that initiative you guys started?
Yeah, there's been discussions. I know that some of the chief meetings, because we're all experiencing the same, but some have different, you know, some have different challenge, not, the non. I, I tell everyone, if your ambulance is ready, you have to be, a lot of parents come out in the air. It's not a daughter wants to be a firefighter, so what goes in it is, if it's ready, you have to be a firefighter. Because fire makes me invest and it's not, you have to be a veteran, so. We lost a gen, we lost a generation. This is the, a lot of the thirty, forty-somethings went into the military. A lot probably in city Boston, in residence, they're working there, so we lost a lot of our generations still. And, you know, a lot of them, we go higher paramedics, not in, they're really corrupt and they relocate. We lost one this year, but we did steal one from Connecticut, it was started on Monday, so we did get.
Recruited, recruited.
Recruited, yes.
Well, coach, coach, coached has actually been used as well.
Yeah, it's just some of my, my other work is, you know, this meeting the needs of, you know, these young people looking for a career path and giving them an opportunity like that is really, it's really intriguing.
I think, I was just telling you, what is offering a scholarship, but their program is gone. I A's just a little, I A's for a little while, they got to put a, hopefully they'll get that back home. There's another program that will go, but hopefully, I mean, a lot of the schools are uncle student loans. And so it's, we're just still working. A lot, we've been training a lot of people on what the zero. We'll get there, it's just, you know, a lot of, these things like the LoTech program, I think it's great because we're doing it regionally. Having, doing it regionally, we can all see every tool.
Great, thank you. So in other words, to become a paramedic, you have to pay for it yourself?
Yes.
Does anyone ever consider having towns pay for the training?
It's something that could be explored, maybe sometimes with an agreement that you give us, you will allow us this, this amount of.
Yeah, like, like, for example, if you're willing to become a teacher and you're sitting.
Yeah.
They, they, they help you, somebody helps subsidize, you would be able to.
Well, yeah, hey, right now, we're doing that with two, I think we're a full of them. We covered.
Again, however, and training.
So that, that's, that's.
Okay.
That, that could be enticing one because it's only fifteen thousand dollars, a lot of people are just, it's just, you know, far more than that to, to all.
Right. So you could, you could come out of high school theoretically and get on a career path from firefighter and work your way up through ranks.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it just seems to me as though if we are missing that generation intact without then, you know, I think we need to be looking at other solutions.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's, you know, I'm like, we just ongoing, you know, on a lot of stuff, you know, that, a lot of kids, parents, something like that, what we see. I think we attended the military. Miles to the thing at the high school, we were, we were visiting, but everyone seemed to, everyone that visited that had a table where they wanted to go. And I did speak with the guidance counselor, I said, in the spring, you're going to get a group of kids that don't know what they want to do. Use your pack, see what happens.
I'm sure if he went out on the street asking how to become a firefighter, ninety-nine percent would say, I don't know.
Yeah.
And if the military used to be out of the way and it isn't as much anymore, I mean, anyway.
Well, population is really high paramedics. So if you go to the military, you go to Iraq or Iran, you're a battlefield medic for two years. You come back, you get zero credit towards being a paramedic. You have to start from scratch to get your paramedic license.
So is that a legislative question?
It's a national thing. I've brought it up several times at the state level and now it's a national standard. They have to go through the entire paramedic class.
Which you can't get hired unless you're a paramedic, right? Which it's, it's a.
Yeah, so we've, we've loosened that, we've loosened that string to hire the EMTs. And we're going to try this program out.
But to become an EMT, you have to have training somewhere for some.
Yeah, that's a, that's hugely, that's a one semester.
Yeah, you can come out of high school as an EMT, they can put that as fire program, they can add as an EMT. Then, then you have the civil service issue, then you have, Quincy on high, I mean, cities hire EMTs, Quincy, Boston, they hire EMTs. But you're going to be a veteran.
Yeah.
Figuring on those parts.
Good portion of the city of Boston right now is veteran-based.
Right.
Pretty good workforce, understanding, feeling all that.
Right.
It's, you know, like I said, they have a third service where they, where Boston is, and they're, they're struggling as well, so they're all.
So we couldn't entice people with an offer to train them as EMTs?
I think we probably should look at maybe at a regional level where we, you know, state fund a program to have maybe taking the EMT that, you know, and a screen out ones that people feel are, are finishing. I think that's something I see something like that and maybe in the work, in the fire gap, when you win, you're trained, you graduate. So that, that's, there's a lot I could look at.
Pittsburgh now has a program that if you go in as a law enforcement, if you go for five years and you graduate and you have your bachelor's degree and you're academy trained. So you are employable right out of.
Yeah.
You know, if you have to go take civil service test or whatever. That's something that maybe someone will want to do, but maybe bridge you on from a paramedic's. But it's not just classwork. You also have to get in the back of the ambulance somewhere and do. do what they call right time and you have to, so many skills over so much time, if you're a slow department, you could be there for a long time waiting to do your skills. And if we're interviewing the paramedic, they're interviewing him, they're interviewing him, they're interviewing Cohasset, they leave you here, they don't know, they don't watch you, uh, because we're all in the same more higher.
I, I, I gotta, I gotta thank my crew, they've done a tremendous job, we've been doing the entire summer in Shore and we got through it somehow, so they dropped in and uh, they, they, these guys are going in and getting help for, help where it's shifting, it's just, you know, they're doing a great job, so. Um, very little complaints about it, I just coming in doing the job, we're, you know, right on track to break last year's numbers of months of medical calls, needing a public edition.
It's just not as, a lot of, many people going into fire service, not as many, you know, I don't know if you saw the story in the Globe, fifty percent of the state police academies is, you know, washed out or dropped out. I talked to one freshman familiar, he said, cadet pulled up the first day, pulled up in his car and the, the, bill of trackers were all yellow and screaming, put it reverse and he left, never even got out of his car on the first day of the academy, so, um, you know, not only is it as short as a trade, it's as short as people actually going into profession that.
Well, the lady, congratulations on you swearing in, I know it was supposed to happen in the summer, but.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Chief was officially sworn in last week with three other.
Well, if I, well, if I, we did a deputy, the captain, we've got a, a fire.
Right, yeah, that was.
No, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Don't forget, oh, I'm gonna make these folks wait.
Okay.
You wanna go to, you wanna go to the, uh, the two.
Two of the.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right.
This is Scooba.
I believe the first step was pretty, dive truck?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to, our, we'll do.
What would you like to do?
Uh, I've got the, um, this is the compressor in my hand, I think.
All right.
Um.
Industrial Protection Services LLC?
Yes. This was also a grant, um, the town chair is on three thousand and, um, I think this was AF, this was, AFG was, um.
You could, this, this, this one on the bed, the state, is it the state thing or?
State contract.
State contract, state bed, this is for, essentially with the oxygen, it means this.
No, this is air, this is breathing air, so we, we fill up breathing air models and our dying tanks from the compressor. We're actually replacing the one at Station Three, which is well over thirty years old. Station One is about twenty years old, we got the grant, so this will go up to Station Three, replace the old one and always have a, have a backup, a good backup and, uh, so at times we, we, we also build the Cohasset Cascade System, which they have on board their truck and, uh, so we're, um, it's been a resource to other towns as well, but this is not breathing air.
I think we need breathing air.
It's not breathing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what we have this.
Breathing air owner.
It's under SCBA, um, self-contained breathing apparatus?
Yes, yeah.
Two fire pattern contracts.
Yeah, my, my, my pack that had two trucks.
Yeah, it looks like it was two.
I think the truck was a duplicate, I forgot.
All right, so this, so was the state bed? Industrial Protection Services, they're out of, hold on, Kingston, no, they're out of Lake Mary, Florida.
No, that's the truck.
The prices of truck out of Kingston.
My own Kingston, that's the, I mean, you know, I mean.
It's the two, that's okay.
Thank you.
That's the problem.
It's supposed to. It was on the, you know, that, I totally forgot, I forgot it last night.
Oh, so.
Realized it.
They're out of Portland.
Yeah.
Well, we should award the contract to the brother member.
Yeah.
For similar names.
No, it's industrial protection services.
Yeah.
I got a gift, oh, thank you.
All right, I can make a moment. Look, the warrant, the contract, industrial protection services LLC, out for the main for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, Cuba compressor and fuel station in the amount of sixty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars.
Second.
Move by, uh, Ms. Harrison, second by, Canfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Jean Dandiness. Um.
Yeah.
A Z, I cannot believe.
A Zuzu. This is, um, this is to replace our dive truck, which we never purchased new, it was that we bought a little longer truck and that was probably purchased twenty-five years ago, um, and we used, we can, the guy, basically the guys, I mean, a lot of carpenters, we basically built dive truck in the back of it, all the, basically the, um, uh, station thing up here, almost like a locker room, the bench, and, um, we did all the lighting ourselves and everything else and that thing's just rusted out and, uh, been very valuable to us. We actually use it as a, um, as a staging station, um, during Thai ties, we'll, we'll put it down in the area, community building and it's just a heated station where we can stand by instead of, um, you know, running back and forth to the station, so we, like, we can get calls, like a lot of the guys are, it's, 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 it's worked out very well. So Marty's is gonna, we're buying chassis from Marty's and, um, we're getting the, uh, the box from, uh, uh, Coletis, and they are, um, Marty's who purchased that, um, and this was ordered at town meeting, um, and we voted eighty-two thousand at town meeting, the, the total with freight is eighty thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars, um, we're gonna make up the difference with the donation, um, from resident named Michael Hale, who donated ten thousand dollars to the fire department, I G. So, uh, we will, um, the difference, I believe, is.
It's a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so we'll use that money to, um, for the truck and then, um, down the road is we've got other equipment, you need, or any equipment that truck needs, we'll, we'll use that one to pick.
That Zuzu was still, can't get the, the commercial on that, right? Commercial on.
Yeah.
All right. Move, are we ready to move to award the contract to Marty's Incorporated of Kingston Mass for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four Zuzu commercial truck in the amount of eighty thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second by, and it's Canfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
You have this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Back to our previous discussion. Let me answer our current town.
Great, nice.
Thank you, Chief.
In this, if you'd like.
So attractive of my notes.
It's, we, we're bringing session park?
Yes, I haven't seen it, it's still.
Board run a, wait two minutes.
Um.
Wait two minutes or beyond, gun.
Just fast, I think, they just have to go. We're down, summon, there's no place. With their right hand. I know, I was, I was kind, I was very usually a huge red. Yeah, they were scanning that. Oh, yeah, so, wow. Which you get. Uh, yes.
What department does that's budget, you haven't even forgot?
It doesn't because they're funded from a, they're, they're on opposite side of grants. And they're not, um, fiscal, they're not settled for a year, so they are grant funds from October first to September thirty.
Yeah, but, just maybe. I was, I was thinking it would be really, it'd be really interesting to see about, I mean, they've had so much success, it'd be really great to get a update on, you know, all the stats and I know that they, they track their stats very, that would be interesting. They're not committing, ours, they, they're better, okay?
I mean, we've had, yeah, we're committing to give updates here.
Yeah, I know, it's been a while.
You know, we're gonna schedule that.
Um, after, maybe after lunch. And you go for employees, season, um, you'll figure it, so it would be, it would be nice to, to get that up.
Three.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so I have a fifteen page, uh, fifteen slide presentation, but guess what I've got now?
Excellent.
Um, so the, the goal they're saying is, is normal would be for ways to build up the financial stability software, um, your progress assessment of the accomplishments by three, so if, um, in fiscal twenty-five, we're looking at implementing what we found from that assessment and then continuing on the permanent record preservation, as we said, I said, for the, um, general letters we never found here in the permanent records, so we worry about the following about fifteen years last year, I, I have reason to go add into them multiple things in a year, so it would be very helpful to have it done. Um, our risks and challenges are not the paper cut, you're having, but we're not out on the front lines doing anything. Um, grant management, trying to move the meeting of the, he says along as much as we can from a financial standpoint, um, the assistant town accountant also trains all new personnel in the financial management software, so it's something he comes on board and they're, they need financial management software, they'll need a manner to, uh, be trained on it. Of course, you know, the, the, the resource director, Bob Clark, just does a real minutes work, he's just going, he's so many different, like, I sent him an email this morning, I could help him be healthier and I looked at his office, he had his hands, I'm like, the email did it to you, he was like, I don't know where to start, so he just does so many things and, um, we really want to recognize his capabilities and how much he is at, um, he is a wonderful addition, we just wanna make sure that he never goes, saying that he was keeping it. Um, and accomplishments, I don't, I didn't, can't mind mentioning, um, the work that he had done in building servers for, um, the news platform, so this version of news we were on sunset it up and we had to go to a new version and it's eleven iterations higher than where we were, so it was significant, um, learning curve, it required all new servers, it's a whole new access, um, everything is different, the programs run about the same, but even the programs look different, they don't have the same terminology, so all of the tools and tips and tricks and documents that we had written, I had to rewrite with the new screenshots, um, all the personnel town in school who used news had to be retrained on what the new software would look like, they all had to have different accesses, new user sign-ons, new permissions, so the first week that we went live, it was June first, all I did was run up and down the hall, I had on the phone trying. Yeah, that's a good idea, because Mike does the backend, he does all the server and all that and I do the frontend, so if you're a new user, I'm going to set you up, if there's something going wrong with the software, it's gonna come to me, um, and if they, uh, if we can't solve it enough, then we'll go to Tyler Technologies, because as Mike has stated, we all stated, it's great software, but they have the worst customer service of any company anyone's ever worked with, um, so you really need to know how to work.
Right, lose contact.
Yeah, you really need to know how to work your way around it, um, so we have done that, so it's very helpful, it was a huge undertaking, it's done, and then we also brought all of our police detail, fire details, food details, inspected disposal, off-access databases and into, um, the financial management systems of Bayvon, and the student activities, we can live game bird first, our rats working on that, um, go, all that out, so we're continuing to expand the system and make use of it, um, because it was a very expensive investment, taxpayers would want to make sure that they don't waste their money for it. Um, the department is made up of four full-time employees, um, our budget is eighty-five percent salaries, right now we have one vacancy that we're, um, keeping as vacant and our purchase of services makes up the difference of our budget and that includes the annual audit and the open actuarial setting. So I try to do it in five minutes.
Great.
Fabulous.
Oh, we, I see our, um, department mission comes together, the council's aboard for the ninth year and you saw the Pat Parker first.
I feel like we asked the questions.
Agreed. I, uh, this, I do a quick number ball, personally.
We never. Money for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to news business. We have a question, one day wine and mal licenses. Um, we, we have to see, I'd like to see if that's been taken off, so let's search the bind laws for issues. Questions, comments, concerns? None or motion?
Serving alcohol at toy store?
I know, that was my own.
It's a parent shopping, then.
All right, okay, well, see, more context helps, thanks.
Yeah, it does help.
Thank you for the ring.
Yes, yes.
When is this again?
December six.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, wait a second.
If anybody needs you, direct parent.
Okay, move.
Go for it, I'll be there.
Move to approve a one-day wine and mal license to the bind bar for a private event at Harbor Lloyd, Light Floyd Company, one forty-sixth Front Street on December sixth, twenty twenty-three, from six-thirty to eight-thirty P M. And move to approve a one-day wine and mal license to the ferry service that is for private event at the Sido Harbor Community Building, fourteenth York Road on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven A M to one P M.
Move by Ms. Harrison, second, uh, Ms. Canfield, sorry. Heard, I didn't know, I just can't deal, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's unanimous. Right, discussing vote, all right, we're now gonna be opening the April eighth annual and special town meeting warrants, can you imagine that already? So we're just opening though, I don't have to add anything else. Questions, concerns, see none, motion?
Move to open the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four annual and special town meeting warrants.
Second. Move by Ms. Conlon, second by, is Canfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discussing vote, the April three ninth special time meeting warrants. We have motion, I think we're all.
Move to open the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four special time meeting warrant.
Move by Ms. Conlon, second by, second, Canfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Discussing vote, warrant, maybe appointments, conservation commission, uh, have any schedules? We still. Morticat Lincoln?
We're gonna hold that.
We're gonna hold that, still one more person.
Yeah.
Uh, but we do need to do traffic rules for rights and.
Um, we also need to have the liaison going to be for the Morticat Lincoln property.
Also, yes.
Did we interview some of the traffic rules? Did I, was it me and was it you?
They're, they're new. Right, or their new, um, officer?
We have Lieutenant David Carmans who's going to replace in Captain Sisto, but we don't need to interview him, he's in.
Yeah.
And then everybody else is just going with their phone.
All right, well, let's do the, um, traffic rules, folks, and then we'll do the liaison. Where's that a list?
Look, point, uh, Lieutenant David, Herman, uh, Dorothy Cook, Blin Schmidt, Taylor Billy, and Sheldon Friday, they have traffic rules, right, relations for a term of one year until successors need, second.
Move by, Canfield, this, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Right, um. Morticat Lincoln, he is on. Morticat Lincoln, he is on.
I am interested, um, but I know that you've put so much time and effort in it, so I would defer if you would. I don't obviously defer to anybody that has interest, but. Honestly, I feel like I've cut my hands full with the Pier Forty-four committee and with the quote part. Whole parkway less so, just, but the Pier Forty-four is just, it's a lot of meetings and a lot of. Yeah. So I'm, I'm happy to, you know, if you'd like to cut a line. Anything else burning?
You're interested?
Going.
You're interested?
No, I mean, I want to be involved, but I don't need to do it yet. I do, yeah.
I'd be happy to help.
Oh, we could be helped.
I think we're all going to be involved.
We're all in more situation.
We all want to be involved.
We're in more situated.
Attention, we'll pull, we'll pull to your graphic.
Well, I suppose.
Promise to report diligently.
I think I promise we're, we're all going to be very heavily involved in this.
Yeah.
So the liaison will be shared by Ms. Cantfield and Ms. Harrison?
Yeah.
You don't need to vote, I just need to know.
Oh, sure, yeah. Yes, excellent.
And then you can do the implementation, implementation committee. I'll trade you, I'll trade you, uh, give us, so this is the, so this, we're taking that, so this one is like the study and the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, got it, got it, got it.
Yeah, two years, two years on that one.
Yeah.
All right, license or no.
So the good news is you don't have to sign all the licenses.
Yeah.
I was hoping. I was hoping.
Just anyone who's. I dare say, I hope I don't have to do the motions, because they're written down.
Yeah.
You should, want to split them?
Yeah, somebody do one, like, one page, somebody page two, somebody page three.
Oh, you have to read them all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the page, the first page.
And the board doesn't have to read that.
So.
No, so we'll split them, so.
Page one.
So Ms. Cantfield will do in holder to restaurants, all on all license.
Okay. Uh, move this select board vote to renew the following in folder, then the breakfast licenses for twenty twenty-four. The Inn at Citro Harbor, Joey Dean and Tally, three forty-nine, Natalie Road, doing business at the Pearl. And move that the select board vote to renew the following retail package, all alcoholic for twenty twenty-four. To Linaia Liquors, doing businesses for Usher Package Store, Inc., Kishin Inc., doing businesses at the package store, Inc. Um, Ford one four three LLC, Lighthouse Enterprises, Inc., doing businesses, Harper said one, and Spirit. And move that the select board vote to renew the following retail package, um, store wine and malt licenses for twenty twenty-four. Holy Cross, the studio six seven eleven, New Harbor Corp, doing businesses through two A, uh, general store, Malanes Fish Market Corp. H and A Brothers, doing business, Stan Mills General Store, M F J Market, Inc., doing businesses, the Village Market. And move this left board to renew the following restaurant wine and malt liquor license for twenty twenty-four, Cosmos Cafe LLC. And move this left board vote to renew the following restaurant, all alcohol licenses for twenty twenty-four. Front Street, um, Citro LLC, doing businesses, Chopsticks and Borks, Great One Even, Inc., doing businesses, River Shed, Green Island Lady, doing businesses as Galley. The Berry Tavern, Nana Enterprises LLC, doing businesses, the River Club, Calumens LLC, doing businesses, Voyage, Salt Society, Inc. Doing businesses, Salt Society, Citro, Tavern, Inc., doing businesses, Citro Tavern, Legacy Management, doing business, no more, Derta. Restaurant Aura, doing businesses, Aura, McCosky, McCosky, Inc., doing businesses, T K R, and Swir, Cafe, Divine Bar. How I play, doing business, Divine Bar, the Drift Inn, Inc., doing business of the Drift Inn. And I, you should note, um, on all of these, they have, um, applied and have been inspected by fire police. Building, lawyer, help them, are up to date on personal real estate taxes, um, as required, and all documents uh, related to the application are on file at the select board's office.
We by Ms. Cantfield, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conlon, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Also note, don't forget, uh, this, all these now, we're not correctly from wrong, maybe these, for all of them, did that on the line.
Yes.
So we want to thank the public.
Yes.
For their patience.
Yes.
Working through this, love them all.
Yeah.
So thank you for being patient with us and staff for doing all the work it did to get it up and running.
Especially Michelle Segazi and Jennifer Gagan, who've done tremendous job.
The best, we're always the best, uh, they did.
It's been a lot of work.
So much work, think about this, all these different.
Lot of, huge project. But it should be a lot easier than it's all in there.
Yeah, the renewal, wasn't it?
Yes.
Good.
Love it, Arden.
Who would like to do general on premise? Common deck. Yeah, you have finished, Tom, but I've missed it, so, yeah.
Okay. Move that the select board vote to renew the following general on purpose alcohol licenses for two thousand twenty-four. Real Harbor Theater LLC, Wedgewood Beverages, Inc., doing business, the Barker House by Wedgewood Weddings. Move that the select board vote to renew the following club, all alcoholic licenses for twenty twenty-four. Situit Post three one six nine, the V F W Inc., Citro Harbor Yacht Club, Citro Country Club, and Cavalli Golf Club, Inc. Move that the select board vote to renew the following club wine and malt licenses for twenty twenty-four. Citrocrack, Crackett Fitness, Inc. Move that the select board vote to renew the following farmer's series foreign permit for malt licenses for twenty twenty-four, Untold Ruin LLC. Move that the select board vote to renew the following common picture licenses for twenty twenty-four. The Inn at Citro Harbor, Joey Dean and Tally, three forty-nine, Cavalli Road, doing business at Pearl. Ford one four three LLC, China Bornane, Cersei's Brat Bravo, Cosmos Cafe LLC, CP's Wood Fire Pizza. Ecom, Ecomi, doing business as Press Pizza, New Harbor Corp, doing businesses, Driveway General Store. Gateway Donut LLC, doing business of Duncan Donuts, thirty-two, Driveway. Three Nine Lady, Inc., doing businesses as the Galley. H and A Brothers, doing business as Stan Mills General Store. Tennessee News, Holy Cross Investments, doing businesses at seven eleven. Laia Maya Liquors, doing business as Greenwich Package Store, Inc. Lucky Thin Cafe LLC, LLC, doing businesses, Lucky Pen, two oh six Front Street, Lucky Thin Cafe LLC, doing businesses, Lucky Pen forty-eight, fifty-three, Driveway. Pershian Inc., doing businesses, Citro, Package Store. Holstein Inc., doing businesses, Tiki O'Malley Sports Cafe, M F J Market, doing business as the Village Market. Maria's Pizza, Ice, Citro Harbor, Inc., doing businesses, San Tom Harbor. Milano's Pizzeria, O'Nays Fish Market Corp. Restaurant Oro, doing businesses, Oro, Quince Juicery LLC, R C S J R, Inc. Doing businesses, Dribbles for Brook Street. R C S J R, Inc., doing businesses, Dribbles, three sixty-seven, Yanet Road. Situit Tavern, Inc., doing businesses, Situit Tavern. Citrocrack, Fitness, Inc. S A I Cafe Store, doing businesses, Dad's Place. Same Am, Inc., doing business as Ronnie Show's General Store. Front Street LLC, doing businesses, Chopsticks and Borks, Cavalli Golf Club, Inc., Iberian Tavern. Legacy Management, doing businesses, No More Restaurant. O'Call Hans LLC, doing businesses, Voyage. Nana Enterprises, doing businesses, River Club. Rainbow Haven LLC, doing businesses, River Shed, Salt Society, Citro Country Club, Inc. Citro Harbor Yacht Club, the Drift Inn, Inc., the Real Harbor Theater LLC, the Vine Bar LLC, Untold Ruin LLC. Situit Post three one six nine, the V F W, Inc. Wedgewood Beverages, Inc., doing businesses, the Barker House by Wedgewood Weddings. And S X R Foods LLC, doing businesses, Crossroad Sandwiches.
Every business decision.
Yeah.
All the way.
Move by Ms. Conlon, seconded by Harrison. All those there.
Aye. Aye, aye, but Mr. Schreit, I think I refuse myself, as usual, from Cavalli Golf Club and from Citro Harbor Yacht Club. So, so aye for all of those, and abstaining for those two.
So, three, zero. Four. And left tension for.
I got it.
We're all following.
All right. The rep read ends.
We still have to do the entertainment licenses and all the others.
So.
Do you think I'll or wait, or I?
I'll tell, can I just?
I was saying, I'm red light, what?
Yeah, I did. It's all fun and beat.
All right, move. Move that the select board prevent general licenses for twenty twenty-four, for Three Nine Lady, Inc., doing businesses as the Galley. Cavill Golf Club, Inc., Iberian Tavern, Lucky Thin Cafe LLC, doing business at Lucky Fan, who is at the Front Streets. Legacy Management, doing businesses as No More Restaurant, Calumens LLC, doing businesses, Voyage. Nana Enterprises, love that name, doing businesses as the River Club. Rachel Haven LLC, doing businesses, River Shed, River and Ora, doing businesses, Oro, Salt Society, Citro Country Club, Inc., Citro Harbor Yacht Club. Polski Inc., doing businesses as T K Matters, Untold Ruin LLC, Situit Post three one six nine, the V F W, Inc. Vine Bar LLC, Drift Inn, Inc., doing businesses as Drift Inn. Wedgewood Beverages, Inc., doing businesses, the Barker House by Wedgewood Weddings. Further move, that the select board approved, septic licenses for twenty twenty-four. All Town, Inc. Rosano Davis, San Terran Pumping, Inc., P F Spencer Junior, Inc. C Spirito, Inc. Further moved, second order of the bowling and electronic games license for twenty twenty-four, for this two, Bowl Away. Further move that the select board approved, last two licenses for twenty twenty-four, Albert Bowl, doing businesses, Seapress. McBrian's Diagnostic Repair, Citro Shell, Inc. Further moved, that the select board approved, last three licenses for twenty twenty-four. Ryan Allen LLC, Christopher Lischfield, doing businesses as Ray's Repair Shop.
Second.
Seconded, uh, by Ms. Harrison, all those moved by.
Myself.
The chair, herself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, with the refusal as noted before.
Yeah.
Abstaining.
And I, I know, I just want to say a quick thank you, because it's a lot of departments that work on this. Trevor Collector, um, Building Department, Fire, Police, all of these physicians have been inspected, making sure they have um, fire systems working, fire alarm systems, everything's posted, it's required, and so it's a town wide effort.
A lot of people, a lot of businesses. Uh, no, duly noted.
So thank you everybody for their help.
Thank you for being the captain.
Everybody, thank you, yes, no, it's. Yeah, thank all those different departments, all the different time, and again, with the internal staff, to be able to put all that together is pretty impressive, uh, so thank you. Uh, other business, liaison reports.
Well, I can report that, um, the planning board and the planning, um, town planning staff have been working on making sure that we're complying with the B T As, um, dealing housing policy. And, um, they will be having their first public workshop as part of the planning board meeting on Thursday evening. So if you're interested in hearing about it or learning about it, you can either participate, if you're, if you're around. What do they call that, a hybrid meeting, and, um, so that would be on the agenda at approximately seven, well, it will be at seven, it's a public meeting is what has to be the time that they state. And that's a zone of market potentially for, uh, two thousand twenty-four town meeting. And then additionally, they will be discussing the issue of wireless communications antennas on utility poles. That's, uh, it's been a topic that's come back and forth and back and forth, and this is yet another discussion about that. As well as doing your regular, that's my, who gets on? Uh, just a quick thing, my whole review will, um, launch after the holidays. Um, so that's, uh, we, we have a forum, and we continue to solicit folks that might want to do that. Um, but I'm taking that off in January. And the fun thing is, I just wanted, uh, for anybody that's been in the harbor and saw the pretty lights on all the trees. That was a result of the E, the E D C giving a grant to the Citro Harbor Business Association. To have a professional company come out and, and do that. And thanks to all the wonders that is happy to, uh, donate the electrical connection for those. We won't talk about that later.
Okay, any others?
That's it.
Who, I have a question, who bike committees, what about that?
They're awesome.
What was going on though?
Um, unfortunately, they always have their meetings on nights I can't go. So, um, they have the first two meetings, they invited, um, uh, subject expert, they had, the first was an M A P C transportation expert, um, came to give a presentation, came and rode his bike all around town. Talked to them about, you know, his technical service, they could provide, but also his assessment. And then there was second, um, consultant that came in at the second meeting. So they're, they're really doing their homework, and they have identified different subverts to be working on different topics of interest. So I will do, I know that the next meeting, I also, I don't know what, what I'm doing, but I have a conflict that night too, I think it's Monday, uh, next Monday. So, if anybody else wants to jump on, you know, that meeting here.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, so I, waterways is tomorrow, so good time, so re looking at the dock boxes, so we'll hopefully get that fired up tomorrow. Um, and that's pretty much all I have, I do, interesting, I did talk to our Shell Fish Principal, unrelated to Citro. But, um, there was, um, a boat out in Bedford that was illegally cramming, um, right at Rexham Beach, right where their sewer alcohol comes out. So it was like not an area that they could plant. And, um, they seized two hundred and forty bushels surplus. Wow. From this boat, and when I talked to him, I said, they're bringing them back, right? And he's like, let me make sure, and he said, they're bringing them back, they're bringing them back to put, um, back in the water there, which is a lot. With context, the two days of planting that they did in the North River was only, was a hundred and sixty bushels. And this was two hundred and forty bushel, because they were like hour drying.
It's a lot. I have no idea.
Bush.
I'm on bushel. Is it like that, was it like that?
Well, it's a little, a bushel basket.
A bushel basket, yeah.
It's a lot.
Needs to use the per lawn tree. It's dead.
It's a whole day, Sam, true.
Personally. Anyway, I thought that was, I thought you'd be interested in that, like, quite, um, yeah.
Wasn't that boat that?
Lots of fines too.
Do you remember the boat that sang up there? It seemed to be.
Yeah, that was.
This is another sort of illegal operation.
That was legal, though, that was the next, yeah, they were okay on it.
You're legal.
And I did notice, I forgot in the beginning to say, um, Jim, I did notice the town council fees got reduced. The paralegal rate was reduced.
Yeah, that was a lot.
From a hundred forty to hundred, from a hundred fifty to a hundred, and the travel rate was reduced. Um, one eighty to one twenty-five, so thank you, because that was some of our angst. I noticed, wow, I forgot to mention in the beginning.
The council's coming, they have a department day meeting on Thursday. So they'll reduce council to the new department. Thursday, and then each department gets a fifteen minute block appels if they want to sign up. I was not charging us for that at all, so.
Oh, nice.
Like, take your time, that, that could last you long. So we've, we've engaged upon a couple of things already, they've been very responsive.
Okay.
Sometimes too responsive, they ask my questions, it was big, you know, my fire, just to get some more. Uh, but they'll come down on Thursday, and we know the problem isn't. So they've always started, so a lot, a lot of stuff, the Karen, uh, anything that's going, you know, on January first, we want to give it to the council.
That's great.
So we can't do it, so. Yes.
Very nice.
I had one prior, uh, so you missed the last meeting, had a great, um, commission disabilities, had this fabulous meeting, really an idea, they invited. Just to have you guys know, the, the annual big event at the high school. But they said, well, why don't we connect with, uh, Kingham and Corrassit and Norwell, everybody else in that meeting, because absolutely, they were so excited. And so they didn't really know exactly all the different things we offered, what they offered. So we look, look at that, why shouldn't we be sharing some of these, so it was really good, uh, for all those folks to start talking. And it was like that whole moment, that, why shouldn't we be sharing resources, this is awesome, so. This is awesome, so that's good news, and hopefully we'll be coming to the big annual event. We tend to, must create a wise, but start talking to everyone else about it, it's good news.
It's awesome. Yeah.
Uh, all right, respondents?
I have nothing in my pack.
No, one.
Right, and now approval of meeting minutes.
Accept the meeting minutes from the last week.
I know, but what's the date on?
November twenty-first.
November twenty-first.
Um, and then we have to move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for the select board meeting on November twenty-first. Since the matter's dispensed, we're still pending this.
Move by, Ms. Canfield, second.
Yes.
Conley. Um, I will abstain, all those in favor? Three, zero, and one. We have the German inside documents motion.
Who, who Eric?
Conley, Ms. Canfield, all those in favor?